Welcome back. It's 6:02 PM and we are here for our workshop session. We have a full quorum. At this time, we will enter into our workshop. We're actually going to discuss the consent agenda items first. So, the first one up is item for consideration of bids received for material on upcoming construction and maintenance. So, that's Mr. Richardson. Questions for Mr. Richardson as he comes down. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I really have all my questions answered. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Kern.
All right, Hugh. Obviously, this is all the stuff you need to do your thing. So, is this usually some, the same outfits? I guess this Gresco is most of, pretty much all of this stuff here?
Yeah, all three bidders were typically companies we deal with.
I'm sorry?
They're the typical companies we deal with, purchase from, on RFPs.
All right, okay.
Councilman Allen?
I don't have any questions. We talked about it the other day.
Councilman Gay.
I wanted to add approximately 25 decorative street lamps.
We got plenty to start right now, but we will be adding some more soon.
Good.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And the next one is a discussion of a bid for roof upgrades for City Hall. And the recommendation of staff is for Caliber Construction in the amount of $299,232. Ms. Ames or is it Mr. Myers who's going to be discussing this?
Mr. Myers.
All right. Questions for Mr. Myers, starting with Councilman Clay.
Again, I got all my questions answered. I'm a happy camper.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Kern.
A couple of questions. Looking on this first page where I see the cost to the city, budgeted item. It says funded. What exactly does this mean? Generally, when there's a, if it's a budgeted item, it's going to have a budgeted item line number like any other budgeted request. So, what is this funded all about? What does that mean?
From my understanding, we had $150,000 budgeted in the line item. And what had happened was it went over to another 150. So, we talked, so I talked to the finance director and we're going to have to take it out of general fund for a one-time cost because the roof's been here since 19.
We're going to have to take it out of where? Out of the general?
General fund.
Okay. So, when we say budgeted item funded, I think that technically means half of this amount is funded. The other half is going to come out of general, right?
That's from my understanding.
Okay. All right. That answers that question. The other thing I had was, I saw your bid matrix and it looks like Caliber Construction and Rikers was pretty close. First thing I say, obviously, I would support this African-American-owned business, number one, being that close in terms of bidders. The other thing is that this outfit is local here in College Park, right across from Mannheim there. So, not only are they an African-American business, they're an actual local city business. So, with that small bit of difference there, and I believe they've worked with us before. Did they do, well, these are the ones that did Godby, the Godby Roof?
Not that I'm aware of. I can tell you.
I think they worked. I think they've worked with us before.
I wasn't involved in that recreation.
Yeah. Michelle would know, but I'd rather go with the local outfits. And I always want to give minority bidders and female business enterprises benefit of a doubt. So, my vote would be for the second runner-up. And again, it's not that much of a price difference.
You're talking about Rikers?
Rikers, yeah. I mean, if we don't support our local businesses, who will? Especially if they're here in the city.
Councilman Kern, I don't know. If I may jump in.
No, I'm done.
He's okay.
Wait, hold on. Councilman Clay, hold on one second. Can you hold that thought? Let me get to everybody else and I'll come back to you on that, okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
I just have a question about the timeline. Do you have an idea about the timeline? When they would start that? Would that be?
I need them doing as soon as possible because this has been going on since October. As soon as we get the contract signed, whichever one, the mayor council picks.
Councilman Gay.
Jackson, for me, the difference between the successful bidder and the other unsuccessful bidder who is an AABE as well as having done work in our city before, my question is, why are they scored less? What rationale did you make not to choose them? Because, one, you support a minority vendor and a vendor that works in our city and have done a job in our city?
First of all, like I said earlier, I didn't know or I was not aware of they did any work in our city before. Second of all, I wasn't on the, I wasn't on the bidding committee. All this is straight bids. And when the bids came in, these are the numbers that we got. We didn't pick them one over another. It was just the lowest bid, that's what we brought to you. We didn't pick them for minorities. We didn't pick them for the percentage. We didn't pick them for locals. They just brought, they just brought it to us for the lowest bid.
So, then, for the record, you can just be a dollar short, but you can be, you can have other criteria that we have goals for and you don't get selected?
It's up to this body to select.
Well, you brought it to us to consider. It is up for us to vote. You've got to give us some rationale. It's not that we're being disrespectful, but you've got to give us some rationale because you can't move this agenda without our votes.
That's correct.
And we have fiscal responsibility up here as well as trying to provide opportunities for other organizations.
Yeah. Well, I wish Mr. Moody were here. Is he?
He's right there.
Oh, there he is. Okay. If I had, I did have a question, which I got answered, but maybe it's relevant that we bring it up. I have a feeling that initially, what we see here in the way of the bids is a much bigger difference than what was finally arrived at. And that's because Rikers came in with a silicone treatment, I believe. That was in their bid. And that was a preferred, but not required, part of the bid, right? Is that right, Mr. Moody?
They were both giving us a bid on their, what they thought were best fit. So, both came acrylic, which ended up being, with Caliber, it would be an additional 17,000. So, that's what elevated them from 299 to the 364 with all the extra additions. So, Caliber is saying that they could do the job with the silicone, not the acrylic, and still give us a good job.
Maybe I've got them reversed. Which is the higher-priced version? The acrylic on top?
The acrylic.
Okay. I said, I'm pardoned. I said it wrong. Let me start over then. Okay. So, they came in with the minimum requirement, the acrylic, the silicone requirement, correct?
Both were going to base it, we were going to look at both options and which one gave us a good deal for the money, which would be the silicone versus the acrylic.
Okay. But the numbers that you have in here are different by about, what, about $17,000, but not in the final bid. When you add everything together, it's just a matter of a few thousand dollars.
Correct. And I believe the way Mr. Humphrey, in his analysis, looked at it, the 17,000 is what put it closer. If you took out the 17,000 and looked at the silicone versus the acrylic, then it would be back down the difference, whatever that is.
So, if we decided to go with the least expensive approach, then they would have a difference of roughly $17,000.
Correct.
But if we push them to go with the preferred approach, which one company said they would do, then they are like, I don't remember, $2,000 or $3,000 apart.
Correct.
Okay. So, part of it is a decision of whether we want to go with a preferred approach in the, in the bid versus the least expensive approach. And that's what makes it so close together.
That's what makes it close.
Okay. Now, let me, let me finish. Second, second thing is, we have tried, we had a actual, in our procedures, we had a procedure where we would give, I remember, say 5% break to companies that we were trying to facilitate, particularly local companies. And we did an extensive study on it and concluded that in order to do that, we had to do a very fairly expensive
Disparity study.
Study, right? City attorney? And so, they ruled that we could not do that legally. We could not give a break just because somebody was African-American or somebody was local legally do that unless we did, went through something, study, I don't remember.
Disparity study.
The parity study.
Disparity study.
Okay, disparity study, which we didn't do. So, we haven't been giving a break, as far as I know, to anybody since then, just because they were African-American or local. Is that correct?
Well, we can't do anything based off of race. It's got to be looked at most responsive to the bid that is currently out there.
Okay. Well, local.
Local, if it's a tie bid per policy, then we will look at it. That means, but if they're not in the city limit.
Basically, we were told we can't do that.
Correct.
So, I don't think the preferential treatment is a valid argument. And one could argue that maybe we shouldn't be going with the 300 and some thousand dollars. Maybe we should be going with the $299. So, I don't think it's cut and dried that we can just switch what, what the bidding committee hasn't recommended, but that's just my opinion.
Well, thank you, sir. Councilman Kern?
Well, we can make a choice and we can make that decision. Beds are brought up here and, you know, we trust y'all with the expertise of this thing, but at the end of the day, I think supporting local is important, especially nowadays. If the other outfit can do the job, we make sure they do it, you know, to the point where we have what we need to get done in terms of covering City Hall. I would always support a local outfit and give them preference. And we still have a point system, right?
Now, are you saying local is in the city limit or because they're in Atlanta?
Well, this is, I think this is city limit here. This outfit's out.
No, sir. They're not in the city limit.
They're not.
They're literally on the other side of the street from the city limits. And so, they're literally a few hundred yards from the city line.
Who do they pay taxes to?
I'm sorry. Say it again.
I say, who do they pay taxes to? Us or the people on the other side of the street?
That I have no idea. I'm assuming they're going to pay on the other side of the street, which would be city and south.
Then they're not in, this is not directly beneficial to the city.
All right, Councilman Clay, just let him finish.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. Yeah, yeah. So, it would be South Fulton if they're on the other side of the street. So, with the point system, you give a certain number of points to certain pluses and minuses with the groups, right? Do you still do it that way?
What point system?
So, there is no more point, no more points that you, when you do evaluations, like a use point.
Okay. All right. Well, we used to.
Point system is only for, for people who are like engineers. Then you do a point system with the, you know, the various engineering companies when they, when you do it. But there's, that's where you do the point system.
Well, there was a while, I remember there was some, some type of a point evaluation in terms of when we looked at and evaluated bids at some point.
We did.
If we, yeah, yeah. But if we're, if we're not doing it anymore, okay. But I remember we did do that. And there was a certain number of points assigned based on if it was a local outfit within the local proximity. There were a number of points assigned. If it was a female business enterprise or an African-American business enterprise or a disadvantaged business enterprise, there were points given. And those point, that point structure was movable in terms of how we determined what was important to this community. So, that's something I think we need to look at. I didn't know we were off of the point system. I'd like to look at, maybe taking a look and getting back on it in terms of evaluations at some point.
Mr. Denmark?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say for clarity, as Councilman Clay hinted, the city of College Park, nor any government can make a decision in terms of awarding a bid using factors such as gender, race, religion, or national origin. That would be unconstitutional. The only way we could get around that and have an actual ability to use race as a criteria is if we did a disparity study which showed that historically minorities have been disadvantaged in this particular region. And that is a very complicated and costly study. We could certainly do that. To this point, we have not. And so, using race as a factor would be unlawful at this point. And I would caution the council not to consider that. If we want to have a discussion at some point about doing a disparity study to show the impact of race on the ability of minorities to gain city contracts in the city of College Park or the South Fulton region, I think that would be a good discussion to have. And we can think about the cost associated with doing that study, the time it would take to do that study. In disparity studies, you measure time in years, not weeks or months to get one accomplished. But in the meantime, I think we have to look at the objective criteria as opposed to something based on race or some other classification like that.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'd say this, and for the record, I've always supported businesses that are disadvantaged businesses. I've always supported African-American businesses, always will. I've always supported female business enterprises and always will. In terms of this company for evaluation, I would much rather go with an outfit that's a local outfit as opposed to an outfit that's in Calhoun, Georgia. Also, the fact that they've done business with the city before, I support them. So, my vote would be to support the Rikers outfit.
Mr. Denmark, question. If this body were to select Rikers, would, could it possibly set us up for potential litigation with the other company that has come in with a lower bid?
Yes, ma'am. That would certainly be a realistic possibility, given what we've heard this evening. So, that would be another reason to go with the staff recommendation. You know, the, there's a distinction I would like to draw, however, between making a decision based on gender or race on the one hand and some, and a company being a local business on the other.
Yes.
Because obviously, historically, race and gender have been what the Supreme Court calls invidious classifications. And those are not favored. You get strict scrutiny. The law seriously does favors making decisions based on race. But promoting a local business, that, that would draw a different level of scrutiny, more of a rational basis type of scrutiny if we prefer local businesses irrespective of gender or race or religion. So, that's a different analysis altogether. I think we should be careful there also, but, but especially if we're going to have a conversation about race-based decision-making and government contracting, I think we are setting ourselves up for a potential lawsuit against the city.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, are any of these?
You can come this way, Mayor.
I've got another question. Thank you, sir. Do, do any of these business, are any of these businesses located within the city limits of College Park?
No.
All right. Councilman Allen, any other questions?
I just, I just, I want to make this point that, you know, I'll always support local. I'll always support minorities, female, race, whatever. But I will definitely always abide by the law.
Councilman Gay?
Yes, a couple comments. On package page 87, I don't want to see any more information about minorities. So, there's no reason to have this on this page. If, if, if your disadvantage or your minority status is not a criteria, then stop putting it on these bids. Because the other people can get these bids and say, well, we thought we might have had an edge. Secondly, question for the attorney. When we vote up here for staff recommendations, is our vote based on our discretion or is it based on, what should we base our vote on?
Yes, sir. You could obviously consider the staff's recommendations, use your own independent judgment, the views of your colleagues, your constituents, all of those factors, your decision-making, Councilman, and you make the decision that you feel is in the best interest.
Because, because respectfully, your firm wouldn't be here if I didn't feel that you were a disadvantaged business that deserved a break. So, I guess I broke the law when I recommended hiring you on. That's number two. So, let's stop, let's stop putting this up here. Don't bring any more contracts up here with this information on it because it's going to confuse the unsuccessful bidders.
Councilman Clay? Yes, Councilman Clay. Go ahead.
I would like to do whatever we can to help local businesses. And by local, and I think it's not just a, it's an economic argument as well as the right thing to do because they contribute to the taxes in our city. That's why I asked Councilman Kern whether they were in the city or not from the standpoint of the taxes. Having said that, we do have here the fact that both Rikers and Jewel of the South have done business with the city, whereas Caliber Construction has not. So, my question would be, gosh, in industry, we used to say, go with the devil you know rather than the devil you don't know kind of thing. And if we've done business with Rikers, my issues are legal. You know, I don't want to do what we've been told we can't do. If we've done business with Rikers, have we been satisfied? What kind of business have we done with them? Have they put on a major roof like this or whatever?
They did the seal code on Tracy Wyatt Center, I believe. I think they did something over at the GICC with their roof issue.
Because if they, if they've done a really good job for us, I think you could make an argument that based on the quality of work that they've done, isn't that, isn't that the case, Winston?
Yes, sir. If you like a company's work, that, that's a legitimate criteria. If they're local and you say, we want to try to do business with local businesses, and Councilman Gay, I would also point out that my office is right around the corner in the city of College Park with occupation certificate hanging on my wall.
I factored that in as well.
Yes, sir. So, so local businesses, we can certainly consider those. People we've done business before, we can certainly consider those. And if the council, as I said to Councilman Gay, you can make a decision that's in your best interest. The only thing I caution you against is including race in the decision-making process. Local business, we, they've done work with us before and we've been satisfied with it. All of that's fair game. But if we're going to make a decision other than what the staff has recommended, based on the discussion this evening, I would encourage you to state the basis for that, for the record, so that anyone who looks at this decision at a later date would say, well, here, they've stated the reason why they made the decision and it's this, not that.
Well, the other aspect of it was, I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, but that originally, Rikers gave us the higher-quality decision in recommending the acrylic coating on top. And the other company came in with a decision that was the cheaper, was inherently cheaper. And at some point, the lower-quality decision was changed to match the higher-quality, the preferential decision. So, now we've got two preferential decisions separated by a small amount of money, one of whom has done business with the city before. And I sure wish I knew whether we were happy with the job that they did. Who's here from Recreation? Anybody? Anybody have any idea? Nobody here from Recreation.
I think Ms. Miller's here. And there was, there was work done.
That's the problem with not having all the staff here.
Ms. Miller's here. Councilman Clay?
Pardon?
And Ms. Miller is here. I believe the folks from Caliber are here as well.
Evening.
We did have the work done at the Convention Center. We were quite pleased with the work.
I'm sorry. Could you speak a little closer?
Sure. We did have the work done at the Convention Center. We were pleased with the work that was done and they did it in a timely manner.
So, for a couple of $3,000, why not go with the person that we know has done a good job for us in the past?
Well, that's what I thought to myself. And literally eight minutes ago, I made the recommendation based on the local preference as well as the fact that they had done business with the city before. And going by the letter of the law, I would support this outfit based on those two factors. But also, I do want to see the identified class on all of these matrices, just like we've been doing. But I definitely would support the local outfit. And again, they're one street over outside of College Park, it turns out. But keep something in mind, y'all. You know, our residents pay Fulton County taxes as well. You know, our residents pay Fulton County taxes as well. And I'm not sure what county Calhoun is in, but it's quite a ways up north from here. Would you like to speak with their reps on the difference in the material? Are you asking me?
Does anyone have any questions for the folks from Caliber? They are here to answer any questions.
I don't, but.
Only to Winston, is that a legitimate criteria that I suggested?
Yes, sir, that we've done business with them before and have been satisfied with them, and that they are local, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
My last question.
Any other, any questions for the representative of Caliber?
I would like to make a motion that we select the-
Councilman, hold on, we're in workshop, so we're, it'll, it'll be part of the right session.
Oh, in workshop?
Yep.
Can't do it today?
We'll, in a little bit.
We'll do it at seven-thirty.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to a presentation from Dr. Chisulo in regard to human culture and civic programs.
Mayor, excuse me. I didn't catch what we decided.
But we can't take a vote in workshop?
Yeah, we're- I know. But is it, is it on the agenda for a decision or discussion later on?
It'll be on for a decision.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good evening. Good greetings.
Evening.
Happy to be here with all of you. And tremendously pleased for the opportunity, Mayor and Council, to be part of progress. I know I have just a few minutes, and I also am aware that you have quite a bit of information. And so, I was given a guidance to reduce my comments and slides. So, I asked Bella to help me in going through this, okay? But I want to tell you, my purpose today is to share how our organization, United Action for the Advancement of Humanity, can contribute to the enhancement, that economic development, the city's core values, and the promotion of unity in the city of College Park, so that we all can thrive together. We can do that. So, today's presentation is for your consideration. Savel, would you turn to page two, please? For your consideration today, I'm requesting that you establish a human, culture, and civic program unit offered under the Department of Recreation and Culture Arts to support and assist UAFA, United Action for the Advancement of Humanity, with its Phase One. Please turn the page, please, Savel. After the approval as a unit, I want to give you a picture of what we plan to do. We have taken the approach, we realize that we have an awesome task ahead of us. So, we've taken the approach to have two phases, to implement in installing and activating all of our programs. All of our programs are designed to enhance economic developments, spread the core values, which is key, and promote unity whereby we thrive together. Our awareness, promotion, fundraising, and memberships is part of a program, just getting the message about what we want people to participate in. We want to talk about what is human culture and promote that, let people know the benefits of having a human culture community, and invite them to participate. Our ambassador training program is a way to get our core values outside of College Park City Hall, out to the people, to the community, to the children. A community with conscious core values can go a long way together. The money we spent was well-spent on those core values. Let's get them out to all the people we can. In our Phase Two, we're taking these programs and services not only in a pedicab. So, visitors, people who are purchasing our products and services, so they know what we offer. We, through our ambassadors in pedicabs in Phase Two, and civic programs. Civic programs is all about solving civic problems. A big problem we have that we have not solved is participating in the voting process of College Park. Our civic programs, we have designed programs and services that can get to the people to participate, to help us all thrive together. That's- So, Savel, would you turn to page four? The core values of City College Park were approved by you, by the Mayor and Council. We have made it a priority in our training, our ambassador training, our pedicab training. We want as many people as possible to experience these core values and adopt them, live them out, demonstrate it in our relationship. We can do that through United Action for the Advancement of Humanity. Let's go on to page twelve, please. We make it a priority. Unity. There's so much division. College Park taking the lead in promoting unity, and how to do it, how to be one race, human, one race of people. Who's talking about that? Let's take the lead. Our ambassadors can help us get that message all around Georgia. Savel, can we go on to our page now? We're on twelve? Okay. Yeah, right now, I want to talk about our highlights. How are we going to do this? How do we get this information out to the people? Through our programs. So, we, our program highlights are, first one is our awareness, promotion, and fundraising and membership program. That is how we're going to get the message through all of these programs, this program coming to our community, to the people. Am I doing wrong time? Savel? Okay.
Got about five more minutes.
So, okay, let me move on, getting through the twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, we went through that. So, these program activities, our first-year awareness program, we're going to push that, we're going to increase membership, we're going to have participating people. Then we move into our program components. So, first, this awareness promotion, talking about our core values, getting all that promoted throughout the community of College Park. Second, we go on to creating programs inside the Recreation Center. Human culture, freedom, liberty, setting up groups, activities, events and stuff. Individuals discover and reveal people for growth and development. We want to help them discover, where are some of the blockage that we have in, in, in not coming together? How do you remove those blocks that keeps us from seeing each other's fullest humanity? We have to see it in ourselves first. So, workshops, topics, talking about unity, how to do it, how to participate in it, agreeing, bringing people to agree in this community. We're one race, we're human. And our children are human, and our grandchildren are human, and we're going to raise them as human children. There are people who will agree to do that. We got a problem, there's a way to solve it, we need people to participate. That's how we bring about a human culture community. Our ambassador training and our ambassador on the streets embodying the teachings, embodying this place of unity, embodying service, these core values, taking them out of the, out of City Hall, taking them to our merchants, taking them to the visitors, the ambassadors for College Park. We can take a lead in our state with your support and help. Finally, Savel, would you go to page? Right at page seventeen. One more page. Oh, seventeen. Well, let me just tell you, seventeen is our budget. Our budget, how we will spend this development money. It lists out how we're going to spend it. I told you about the activities that we're going to do and how we're going to get the results. And so, now, Mayor and Council, I'm asking you again for your consideration to implement a innovative human, culture, and civic unit under the Recreation, Arts, and Culture Department, and assist us in funding our first phase of our operation of the Human Culture and Civic Program Unit in College Park. All of that lines up with the core values. All of, everything that's in the core values of College Park is in what we want to do for College Park. Again, thank you for this opportunity. If you have any questions for me, but right now, I'm finished with my presentation, and again, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Clay?
I certainly agree with the intent. I've known Dr. Chisulo for some time, and I think one of the unique things about College Park is the way we all work together pretty well. Whether it's race, whether it's sex, whether it's sexual persuasion, whether it's religion, what have you. I think we have an amazing environment in College Park. That doesn't mean it can't be better. And I think the concept of considering the most, the thing we almost have in common, which is our humanity, as opposed to all the other things that are dividing us these days in the nation, the world, the state, the local communities, counties and what have you, I should say. I, I think this is a great concept. Making it, changing the culture, I know I, I have a little bit of experience with that in business, and I had to change a development culture, and it took me three years before we made really good, achieved good progress. Takes a long time. It's hard to do culture change, very hard, probably the hardest thing you can do. But I love the concept. I, I think if we fit it into Recreation, I think Michelle is probably receptive to it. I'm not, at this point, committed to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think I've shared that with you when I saw some early numbers on this. I think we have to, if we're going to do this, and that's up to the Council, if we're going to do this, I think we have to treat the first phase as a pilot and, and see how it goes, see how the results go, maybe change the approach, what have you. Do we know who would actually do the training? Would that be you, would that be someone else?
Absolutely. I am and will be the lead trainer. There's several proteges of mine that will help me in this process.
Okay, well, it's, it's obviously not in the budget at this point, so this is, this is something that we'd have to consider in, in the budget process. But I'll leave it to the rest of the Council to ask questions and see how they feel about the concept.
Councilman Carr?
Dr. Chisulo, thank you for coming. Great presentation. I think everybody knows you in the community, and he is a very important individual in our community. We always talk about community stakeholders and community partners. You know, government's great, and that's the system that we all live under in terms of setting public policy. But if you're dependent only on government to make your community better, I could tell you from firsthand experience, you're going to be let down if you think government is the answer therein by itself. It takes a community. It takes nonprofit organizations and for-profit businesses, it takes churches, it takes schools, it takes everybody grabbing the shovel and getting to work on this project for a better community. So, I support you one hundred percent. Anytime somebody comes from the community with a project to do good and betterment for this city, I've always been all ears. Some of our best ideas come from some of our local folks in the community, I think. I think the expertise in unifying our community is going to, you know, lie with our community representatives, some of us up here, obviously. I'm okay with the preliminaries of thirty-six, get things going, see how it goes. We want to be able to make some tweaks and adjustments along with you with this programming. And I'm assuming that this council body would have some direct advice and consent in regards, in particular with the ambassadors, perhaps. We definitely want to be a stakeholder in this and not just a pocketbook for it. So, we want to make sure that, you know, some of these selections are commensurate with what we're looking at in our communities as well. So, with that, I'd be okay with it. I think it's a good thing, and, you know, we want to always try to do good. And I'm glad there's some open minds up here for some new things, so, yeah.
Councilman Allen?
Yes, thank you very much for being here and bringing this to us. One thing I love, like everybody else in College Park, is the community, is the involvement in the community. There's a lot of people that would join you and help you in these programs. I think it's a good program, and I agree with everyone else. I think, I think it is worth looking at as an initial phase, taking. I want to make sure that we get those involved that live in apartments and some of the housing, as well as, as the other areas, and I'm sure you've got that in there. But I just want to make sure that we get everybody involved. I think that's the way to go about it, and, because we are a community, and we do stick together like a family. So, I appreciate you bringing this to us, I think it's well worth taking a good look at it.
Councilman Gay?
Yes, sir, I believe that we could probably consider adding it to our upcoming budget. I would invite you to watch our budget session and see how it plays into the numbers. The only thing I would probably want to talk more on is the PD caps. I'm not really following that, but I, as we've talked for hours on hours about this initiative, certainly I support it. I'm not really following that, but I, as we've talked for hours on hours about this initiative, certainly I support it.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next item is a presentation from Prime Engineering regarding infrastructure, regarding an infrastructure update for Six West.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wanted just to take a few minutes today. Lots of questions has been asked over the years, particularly recently, more, more so recently, on what kind of infrastructure do we have over in the Six West area? What kind of information has been created that really resides in the engineering group here at the city? And so I wanted to take just a few minutes and, and go through a slide presentation with you. And I know some of the diagrams in there are pretty small. This is a really big piece of property. You can see how big this board is and how much property is, is involved. If you go to the next slide. Oh, I do, wonderful, thank you. There we go. So first, I just want to give an overview of the information that we have from, from an engineering standpoint and then sort of talk about some of the projects that are ongoing that we also have additional engineering data from. And I'll share that to you in this project. First of all, from a boundary survey, we have a boundary survey of the entire parcel, all the way around the perimeter of it, as well as individual parcels within the development. We are able to, you know, we, we've done breakout parcels on it as well. They include the residential district, the entertainment district, pretty much any district we want to create, we're able to do that with the survey data that we have. We also have, you know, I dropped this down. We also have, that's the overall boundary that you see there of the Six West parcel land, three hundred plus acres, I believe it is. We have done a specimen tree survey. As you well know, that part of the ordinance for the city, you have to know with specimen trees, there's tree recompense. Those have been surveyed and incorporated into that database. We have done LiDARs topo of the entire property. This is an aerial-based, it's like a sonar is the best way to describe it, to give us two-foot contour intervals of the entire tract of land. From a utility standpoint, we have the water system, which comes from existing maps. We have water line sizes, fire hydrant valve. We have sanitary sewer that was, was done as part of the database collection for sanitary sewer invert size, size lines, types of lines. We have done storm drainage structures and size of pipes and material types. We've done reused water, that's new, that runs from the golf course all the way up to the GICC. We have electrical transmission and distribution, which the College Park Power has. And then we have gas, which is natural gas, small distribution lines that are within the area from gas companies. From an environmental standpoint? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We also have jet fuel. There's two major pipelines for jet fuel. There's Colonial and Plantation. They run parallel to Camp Creek Parkway and then veer off basically as we get just past roads. From a, we've also done SSES of all the pipes in that area, where we've actually gone in and videoed those type, videoed those pipes to look at condition. And then we've made some repairs. We've also done stormwater inventory. We have not CCTV'd or cleaned any of those pipes because that's not made it through the budget process yet.
What, which pipes?
Stormwater pipes, yes. The new ones we have that we've installed, I'll talk about those in a few minutes. Environmental surveys as part of some of the ongoing other projects that we have done. We've inventoried some of the waters of the state and some of the wetlands in the areas. We also have floodplain information, which comes from FEMA, where all of the major streams in that, in the area have been studied and mapped. I think I just went over that one. This is a diagram of what the sanitary sewer pipe network that we have, that's Redwine Road at the bottom, so that's the residential district that you're seeing there. But we have the entire Six West development. Some of the previous projects we've done, we've done the golf course rehab work to the pond, where we, we took out all the silt to increase capacity of it. We have done improvements to some channels and the pump house that feeds water to the golf course as well as up to the GICC. We've done storm drainage improvements along Columbia, John Wesley, Yale and Oxford. This included not only putting in brand-new storm systems, but also putting in water quality devices, which help the individual development along that place to have to deal with less treatment on their, on their individual properties. There's the gas pipeline relocation project. That's the one that was relocated for the road street connection to Camp Creek Parkway. That's the road street, that's currently underway. I think everybody is familiar with that. It's expected to be completed at the end of twenty-three or maybe early twenty-four. And it's looking very good all the way up to where the, where the roundabout's going in. And then we have the pedestrian bridge, Global Gateway Connector Project, which is the multi-use trail that goes from the GICC all the way to Main Street and downtown College Park. And in a quick nutshell, that's what, all we have. I'll leave these drawings here so that if anybody really wants to dig in. But all this information is available to, to you, Council, and as well as to the folks that we meet with on a regular basis, trying to share what information we have on the developments. Hope that helps you guys. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Councilman Clay?
Gosh. I didn't realize that we had done such a complete job on the infrastructure at this point. So this is a very, very helpful presentation. It's also very helpful for anybody that's watching this on streaming or TV or what have you, because it says we're right ready to do work in Six West. We know where things are. Is there any infrastructure short of CCTV-ing the storm drains that we don't know, that we still have to learn or at least needs to be done?
There is one phase left on the sanitary sewer CCTV project, which is citywide. It's still, it's that one last phase that has not been done. There is the cleaning of storm drain lines in the city as a whole.
I'm talking about Six West now.
Yes, Six West as well. So those, that is, that is still some of the things that need to be done. I'm not so sure that we really need to go in and do much CCTV to the storm drain because as, as it begin, as it gets developed, so much of that will get torn out and replaced anyway.
Yeah, which was going to be my next question. Okay, we've determined the condition of it and I guess it works. I mean, do, do, do the pipes that you've discovered that have water carry water? Could they carry water if you tapped into them?
Yes, I think the, again, I think the water system, the sanitary sewer storm systems, many of those is the, is the roads get redeveloped and as the parcels get developed, will need to be re, re, either be improved or will need to be removed and replaced, just because many of them in there are, you know, eighty years old.
Right.
And they're sort of at their youthful life.
But, but it's important to know where they are.
But we do know where they are. We do know what condition most of them are in. That is correct.
Okay. And let's see, there was one more thing I wanted to address. I guess, I guess you already covered it. They may or may not be in the right place.
That is correct. Many of them will probably be in the wrong place because as we, as individual parcels go in there and do mass grading to these sites, you know, you take the residential area. Pretty much everything inside the district is getting graded, taken out, removed or replaced or abandoned in place. And new will go in its place. The same will happen throughout the rest of the district. And as different streets are, are redone, those utilities get redone with them.
Okay. So is all this data now that we have, has it been integrated into our GIS system?
I think, I think almost all of it has. I'd have to check with GIS, but probably eighty or ninety.
Well, let me put it a little differently. Is, it is, I presume it is in your plan to get it into our GIS system?
Yes, it's, yes.
And?
We will make sure it's there.
Yeah.
If it's not already.
And hopefully it will be done soon. I, Jackson is?
So yes, Byron works for, for Rob, but he brings down CDs of those areas. And every time that they, they got this little handheld device and they, they set it on top of a manhole, whether it's a sanitary sewer or a storm drain manhole, and it goes up to someplace up in the sky and they get these directions. I'm just making that up, but anyway, I know. But anyway, everything is GIS. So if, if it gets covered up by grading or it gets covered up by trees or limbs or anything, they can still locate it because they've been out there and located all that stuff.
Okay, so, so in other words, if I were to go into our server and download one of the GIS maps that we produce, I could take the geo-coordinates for that and I could literally walk out into Six West and say, I am standing on top of the pipe that goes to such and such, correct?
You could do that with a sanitary sewer. You can do that with storm sewer. You cannot do it with water. You cannot do it.
Gas lines.
Gas lines. We, we have maps of those and those are maps of water and gas. We have that information, it's in GIS, but it's not, it's not field-located.
It's, it's not geolocated.
It is not geolocated, that is correct.
But it's, so there's?
We know, we know what side of the street it's on.
Yeah, okay. That, that, that's exactly what I wanted to know. Okay, well, that's excellent. Thank you.
Councilman Carter?
Yeah, thanks, Rob, for coming out. I'm glad we have this overview. This is, you know, the largest development project in the history of this city. And it's very important that we're keeping tabs on what we're doing, where we're at, what we're looking at. Progress has been going good out there, I think. And it's good with you guys keeping an eye on things as well as, see if they outfit, BDR and the whole nine. We want to make sure we're building that site up and developing, you know, as fast as we can. But at the same time, we want to make sure we're developing right. One of the things I had thought about, and I said to myself, you know, location is obviously important in terms of infrastructure, what we're dealing with, what we have. But also infrastructure history and dependability in terms of those things. As we look to sell off these parcels here in the Six West area, there's a lot of issues in terms of questions, I guess, from folks that are interested, speculators, but as well as on the city side in terms of what we're looking at. And we, we've got great maps to look at what we're talking about here. But, you know, I said to myself, in terms of infrastructure, and this is not just something for Six West. We're such a small and, and closely knit city. I said to myself, in terms of engineering and infrastructure, there was probably only one person that I knew of that knew more about this city, block for block, probably than anyone else. And that was William Moore, who was our former engineer. I know you're familiar with William, I'd imagine. Jackson, I know you're definitely familiar with him. Where's Jackson? Is he here still?
He's over here.
Oh, there he is, okay, all right, okay. So I, 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 I thought about it and I said to myself, well, to make a long story short, I gave him a call. And we talked for a little while and, you know, caught up in terms of how he was doing and what we were up to. And it was good to hear his voice. And I mentioned to him, I said, listen, I don't know if you've been keeping up with current events in College Park in terms of what's going on, but I wanted to talk to you about something and get your thoughts on it. And he said, well, he said, I know that in current events, your new city manager starts in April. I said, okay, well, yeah, you, you're right up on current events. And, you know, I was talking to him to, wanted to, you know, make sure, you know, he's firing on all cylinders, you know, these days, you never know. So I told him, I said, we got a lot of things we're doing with Six Western, with properties and whatever have you. What, what I was proposing was bringing him in. And what I would like him to do is to put together some kind of a book in terms of going block for block throughout this city, in terms of identifying some of the history of what we have in the ground, above ground, covert storm drains, you know it, citywide infrastructure. You know, there's some analysis that you can't measure in, 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 in cost. But in terms of efficiencies for the future, I said to myself, it'd be great to get all of that institutional knowledge kind of categorized and cataloged in a sense where in the 2030s, we would have some definitive block-for-block information that would be pretty doggone valuable, I thought, in the future for this city. Storm drains, the, the, which ones have given us trouble over the years? Which retention ponds, you know, may have the propensity for, for, for spill over into the streets? All types of stuff that only someone that's really been in the trenches, under the trenches, the whole nine for, for decades may know about this stuff. So I, I thought, and I was, I thought it might be a good idea to look at possibly bringing them in for a week or two to kind of do a full city assessment and us have that institutional knowledge block for block. So we would know what we're dealing with and have a good sense of the history of this stuff. And it's important, you know, the older you get, the more you appreciate history and institutional knowledge, you know. You know, when, 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 when I first came here in oh-five, I thought I knew it all. And then I realized, I said, man, I don't know anything about this stuff. But you appreciate folks that have been before you and that actually know some of this stuff. But I thought it might be a good idea just to have that in the book somewhere in addition to the stuff that we have now. I think it'd be a big help to us. So I wanted to put that out there and I wanted to get y'all's thoughts on that because I thought it'd be a good idea. But this is great information and we want to, want you to keep us updated on how we're doing out there, so.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, yeah. I appreciate it. It's very good information and I think we need to do this about every three, six months, something like that, maybe six months. And then as it gets moving, you know, just, just so we understand. I, I worry about the water, you know. Are we going to have to have another water source? I know Jackson's working on one, but, you know, with Hawthorne Station and, and, you know, we've got the sewers be coming out on West Fayetteville Road, we got, got other ones. I just want to make sure we have plenty of water. And you say we're, we're good on water, so.
I will have another report for you on the water. Probably two weeks to four weeks.
Okay.
We still have Clayton County that we're trying to meet with.
Okay.
And once we have that meeting with them, we'll be able to come back and report sort of what, what our findings were from the storm that we had, as well as some of the, the grant money that we're, we're going after. And maybe the next steps of what we need to be looking at from a financial standpoint or from a planning standpoint to take us to the next, for the next fifty.
I mean, having enough for, for Six West and everything that's going to be going in there as well, so. You mentioned in here on, on one of the pages that the water of the state, road street and trails is partially done. I think it was on packet page forty-six. Yeah. Can you have an idea how much percentage you say partially done? Is it done fifty percent, eighty percent? Just a ballpark.
Probably twenty-five percent, maybe. We have where the, where road street crosses with Main Creek, where the, where the bridge is at. We basically have that creek toward town. We basically have that creek toward town, with the exception of a couple of branch, branches it runs off. And those were associated with the, with the storm drainage improvement project we did in 2010, the Road Street project, and then we used the same data for the, for the trail project. So, what's missing is there's one major draw that runs north to south that's between here and the Public Works Building that's not been done. But of course, the major creeks, those are obvious and everybody knows those exist, so those, you know, really no reason to do those, there's, there's seventy-five foot buffers on those and when it's time to develop, the surveyors, they'll, they'll, they'll pick that up when they, individual developers develop it.
Okay, now, and then you answered two or three other questions already headed here with, with your program, so thank you very much and I, you know, I look forward to the next time you come.
Councilman Gay?
How you doing, Mr. Mike Fearsom?
Just fine, thank you.
A couple of quick questions. You mentioned that your findings are available. Are they consolidated to where they can be given to someone, shared in a file? How is that?
Yeah, the, the city has all these.
Is it compiled, like?
Yeah, this is all, this is all information the city owns.
When I say if a developer wanted to come and we want to just provide that developer all of your findings?
Yes, we do and we, we provide that to them often, either AutoCAD format, GIS format, different, different ways, however they may want it from their engineering side.
It would be a file of all the infrastructure and surveys?
Uh, yes.
Is that what they would ask for?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, I look at Camp Creek Marketplace and the, the first phase was so successful, I noticed when they built the second phase, they needed another entrance off of Camp Creek down there near Publix and Walgreens. My question is, if way down the road, if we were to consider, consider another entrance into Six West at Global Gateway hypothetically, the pipeline, I noticed the pipeline is already below the street surface. If hypothetically, that was a, a second entrance in the future, just conceivably, would we have to lower the pipeline or we would just bridge over?
It depends on the elevation of that pipeline, so if the connection that we made at Road Street, where Canton Road was coming through there, it was actually, Camp Creek Parkway was cut in and the pipe was already there, so it, it went up and then the pipeline's down. So, when we went from Camp Creek to, to connect to Camp Creek, we had to run our, our vertical profile for our road, we were in, we didn't have enough cover on that pipe. So, if we go down to Global Gateway, I believe that section, the land is lower than Camp Creek, so we shouldn't have to do anything with it.
Okay.
You're, you're right, I've already checked that out and I'll tell you what the, we have, every issue we have here, we can overcome, but the, the main issue is why we didn't, why we looked at this, we looked at this over the last ten years, is it's in a flood plain and we have to, we have to try and figure out how to build another bridge over the flood plain, because the, because the water that comes out of the GICC, we'll use that as an example, comes underneath that road and goes into that pond that's there, and so we, so we have a lot of hoops that we have to jump over in order for that to happen. So, that's not going to be a three-year...
I understand, that's odd.
The other thing, Councilman Gay, is, is part of the traffic study that was done for the Six West development, we had to look at all of the intersection along Camp Creek and the one right there to the entrance to the GICC, that's one intersection that has to be widened and expanded to come back to, to handle the traffic.
Oh, and, and to piggyback on Councilmember Allen's question about water, if we have to have another tank, just from what I see, I would think Six West would be the ideal location for it. I wouldn't want another tank, we got one, uh...
We can answer that too. We can answer that too, we've already, we've already put in two applications and I'm just going to tell you that of my city manager.
Okay.
So, yes, we've already, I'll, I'll explain it, if we want to explain it to you now.
Do it later.
Huh?
Do it later.
Go ahead. So, we've talked to the airport, of course.
Later, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do it later in your report.
Hey, you got me on a roll.
I get it.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And, and you said a copy of that, we, we have a, because I don't go on the shared drive much, so who on staff has a copy of this presentation with your maps? Who has that?
These maps or, or that PowerPoint presentation, those just came straight out of it, I just, it's in your package, but...
Yeah, I, I'm saying a, a email, can someone send me an electronic version of that without me having to go find it?
Some of these are on here?
Well, just your presentation.
It's in the package.
Oh, sure, it's in the package.
Electronic package.
All right, so the next item is a presentation from Dr. Baker on the Citywide Classification Compensation Study.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Last year, you all charged me with, or approved me, rather, to conduct, get a firm to conduct a salary study for us and I have represented it from Evergreen Solutions who will be presenting their findings along with their recommendations.
Hi, how are you? I'm, all right, is that better?
Yes, yes.
Hi, I'm Stacy Witchell with Evergreen, I was the project manager for your study and I thank you for having us here today. Did a drive up from Tallahassee and a little rainy weather along the way, but glad to be here and excited to kind of walk you through what we've done so far. It's a workshop, please ask questions either along the way, hold them at the end, and we'll go from there.
We'll ask you at the end, so go right through your presentation, thank you so much.
So, this project for you was a compensation study, so we weren't looking at a full class and comp, it was comp, so we're looking at your current structure, we did look at some equities internally, how you were structured, how you were using your pay plan, and then compared you to those market peers to see where you stood, because ultimately, your goal here for this study was to make sure you're as competitive as you can be with the market. We started this project right around the holidays, sort of collecting your data, several meetings with your leadership team here to talk about what are the needs, what are the areas of concern, the areas that we really wanted to make sure we focused on during the course of this study. We collected your salary schedules, all your employee data, and then, of course, talked about your market peers, classifications we wanted to use as benchmarks, and then went to work collecting the market. When we talk about looking at your internal data, we conduct what we call an assessment of current conditions. Your assessment of current conditions is where we're looking at your plan now, what seems to be working, what isn't, do you have any areas of compression, how is your structure, does it follow best practices? And so, looking at your plan right now, as far as the overall structure, it does follow best practice. You know, for your range spread, that's the distance between the minimum to the maximum of those pay grades, best practice is fifty to seventy percent, you guys average fifty-five percent. So, you're right within that range, it's a very typical structure, pretty transparent in, in how it's used. We did notice that your employees, about fifty-six percent of them are compensated below the midpoints of their pay grades. And based on, you're looking at your overall tenure, there is some compression there at employees at some pay grades and at some of the same classifications, of, of course, based on time. Looking externally at your market peers, we selected twenty peers with your team here to go collect their salary data to see how you compared. So, your peers were selected based on people in close, of people, organizations in close proximity to you and then also ones that you're competing with, and then just ones expanding out a little bit in this kind of called Greater Atlanta area that are in similar situations to you. Like I mentioned a few seconds ago, we did select ninety-three classifications as your benchmarks, so those covered all the pay grades, sampling all the different classifications, and that's what we went to your peers with to find out how those positions were compensated at those organizations. And when we're looking at that, we're looking at job descriptions, so I'm not looking at a class title to a class title, especially smaller towns, you wear multiple hats, you can't do that, so we're looking at job descriptions. And I'm looking for about a seventy percent match in what those essential functions, level of responsibilities are between the jobs. Based on the data we collected, you can see on the, on the presentation up there that the city is behind market, anywhere from twelve to about fourteen percent. So, taking that information in and the conversations we had, the meetings we had, we talked about where do you want to be from a competitive standpoint? So, we went with the fiftieth percentile of the market, so think about the old-fashioned bell curve, right there at that midpoint of the market. So, we wanted to build you a plan that allowed you to be competitive there, to build you an open range plan, and then also to provide an adjustment for that market position. So, we did about a ten percent adjustment to your salary schedules, then we also consolidated a few of those pay grades where you had pay grades that just weren't being utilized. So, this is what the new pay plan would look like. This is one pay plan, it's all, all of your classifications would be assigned to a pay grade within this plan, and then it's updated here. Right now, your minimum starting point is right at that fifteen dollar mark, so this is slightly higher than that. This pay plan is reflective of that fiftieth percentile position of the market. Now, whenever you build a new pay plan and you talk about how do you crosswalk your employees over to the new pay plan, there's several different implementation options, there's several ways you can go, they all have pros and cons to them. So, we ran several different scenarios based on the conversations we had. The first one we did, we run for everybody, is always bring to minimum. So, if all you were going to do is take this new pay plan and implement it, what would that minimum cost be? So, benefit of a minimum cost implementation is it's going to be the lowest cost option every time. The negative side of it, though, is it automatically creates more compression between your employees.
All right.
Okay? We ran a couple of different, I'm going to call it time parity options. So, we ran a class parity, a higher parity, and then a hybrid. So, class parity, when you crosswalk somebody over to their new pay plan, you look at the pay grade they're on now, you crosswalk them to the new run, we're going to run a linear regression formula, so we're going to look at their current salaries, their time and classification, and then we're going to line them up accordingly, okay? So, we're going to look at the time in class. Benefit there is you're, you're able to separate some people in the same classification. So, administrative assistance, administrative assistance, you've got, if there's ten of them, you want to have them spread out based on their time in that classification. So, a five-year versus a fifteen-year isn't receiving the same salary, okay? Higher year parity, we're, what we're doing there is very similar, but I'm, my starting point there is their total time with the organization. It's always going to be at a higher cost than your class year parity. Your higher year is, it, it's a good place to start, to look at, but it doesn't take those promotions into account over time, so it can inflate a salary position, because it doesn't take those, that growth over somebody's career. Hybrid, we're actually going to do a blend of the two. Hybrid, what we're doing is we're basing that on time and classification, but then we're going to weight it for total tenure, so you're going to value those employees that have built their careers here with you, okay? The, another one that we ran was current range penetration. And current range penetration, that's where you're maintaining an employee's relative position on their pay plans in relation to where they are from end to max and where they are in relation to each other. And I, I will say, when we look at numbers here for that one, remind me, you've got, I, I don't know that that's going to be a good option for you implementation-wise, primarily the way your public safety time is calculated in your current database, it doesn't really account well for the different clock hours that some of those folks are on, some are not, they're not all on twenty-eighties. Another one we ran, which is pretty standard for HR, is comp ratios. That's a person's position in relation to a midpoint. And again, we're going to maintain somebody's position to a midpoint, okay? Discounted comp ratio, I'm doing the same thing, I'm just allowing for a discount. It's, it's a, it's a budget savings implementation option and then it also, if you've made big shifts to a pay plan, it's something you might want to consider. An option, and you'll see it here with the cost implementation in a second, that I think works well for you, is the move to market. Move to market is based off of your, the, the minimum. So, the move to minimum, the first option we talked about, I told you it creates compression. Move to market is helping to address the compression that's created. So, what we're doing is we're actually looking at time, so I'm looking at the employee's tenure and based on their tenure, I'm adjusting their position to midpoint. So, it's not a full comp ratio, so it's a little bit more cost-effective, cost of, um, way, way to implement the plan, but it will, it'll let you address any compression created, okay? So, based on somebody's time, we would move them zero to three, you know, one to three years, you know, spread them out about two percent, three to seven years, maybe five percent, and then so on. That way, you can, you can handle the compression that would be created by just move to minimum. Now, with your general plan, this would be the cost estimate of these options. So, now, keep in mind, these are estimates, employee data's not static, people are hired, people leave, people get raises, so, but this is based on a snapshot in time for your implementation, okay? That move to market is the one that I mentioned would be a good fit for you and your employees based on spreading them out over the quartiles too, and that estimate is just over one-point-two. Now, I mentioned a minute ago, we only did a comp study for you, but after our meetings and discussions and looking at your market data and then also looking at what your other public safeties agencies are doing around you, one of the things that I want to give you just, just for consideration, I know this is an informational session tonight, is to consider taking your public safety, your fire department, your police department, and moving them to a step plan. This would be something that's consistent with most of the other public safety agencies around, departments around you and would allow you to better recruit and retain for those different positions. So, your general plan would not change, same thing we looked at a second ago. However, for fire department, we would put them out and put them on their own plan. So, what you see up here, obviously, those are, those are hourlies, right, because those are not annual salary dollars up there, but you would take their hourly, hour, those, those rates and then multiply them by their hours worked, whether for fire, twenty-seven fifty-six, or the few classifications that are on a twenty-eighty, and then you could adjust those salaries accordingly. You can see up there kind of an example of where those positions could fall and which pay grades they could be assigned to. And if we put them on a step plan, those employees would now have a standard step progression that they would have over a twenty-step program. Again, this is just something for your consideration, happy to come back and talk about it a bit more and then work with your, those two departments in particular, if this is something you would like us to pursue. Your police department would look like this. And this, of course, includes the jailer position and your comms positions, okay? Your lieutenant position up there is on an annual basis, because that is an exempt position, so that's an annual salary position, that's why the difference. And again, this would be their step plan. So, I know it's hard to equate that there to look at an hourly and think about what an annual would be, since we're on police, I can tell you, so police came in at market right, right around fifty-two, fifty-three. And this would actually be a little bit slightly more aggressive than that, fifty, it, it's right at fifty-six. That's moving you into the next fiscal year and looking ahead to the adjustments that your other peers are going to be making, so that would keep you competitive. So, there's room in there to adjust down if we needed to, but that would be kind of the starting point that you might want to start looking at and considering. And that would be for a full, to police, twenty-one eighty-four, so they're not on a twenty-eighty annual clock, they're on twenty-one eighty-four. And then just for a comparison, just to remind you what the two cost estimates were, as I mentioned before, that moved towards market three-tier on the bottom was the recommendation, if we stayed on a one general plan... if we stayed on a one general plan, police and fire department salaries, your jailer, your comms, very similar salaries within a few hundred dollars of each other. There's no big difference there. If you're going to do a step plan, though, I wouldn't recommend that option. What I would recommend is that box in the middle. Kind of a blended approach. I would place fire and depart, fire department and police department employees on the step plan based on a class year parity. That way you're accounting for their time at their different ranks and positions and placing them accordingly. But for the rest of your employees, I would still recommend that move to market option. A lot of data, a lot of information. I know you guys are going to have some discussions about this moving forward, too. Like I said, happy to come back. I can join some virtual meetings, come back and join in and answer any questions that you guys have after you have a chance to take a look at this a bit more. So moving forward recommendations, and this is recommendations really at that final step. When you do get ready to implement these, like all of our, our documents are, they are living documents. So review, keep them updated so they maintain their relevancy for you, and then do updates every three to five years to make sure your pay plan itself is staying competitive.
Thank you so much. We'll start with questions with Councilman Clay.
Well, I wish we had these slides that we just saw in our packet. Unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to look at them, and I, and I'm, I'm good, but I'm not that good. The difference between, we've had this, I've been on council fifteen and a quarter years, so we've had this discussion about step plan before. Councilman Phillips was a, a fan of the step plan, argued in favor of it. He came out of the military and, conceptually, from the standpoint of an employee, how does the concept of a step plan differ from the, the rest of the organization? And, and I'll tell you what my thought is, it is, you advance in rank, so to speak, job grade in this case, based on how many years you've been in the job grade. Is that correct, basically?
Basically, but you would only advance eligible employees. So employees that are new hires on probationary status, you know, you're not advancing there. Employees that are on improvement plan would not advance.
Right. So, so everybody but a poor performer advances from one job grade to the next based on longevity in the current job grade, correct?
Well, they advance a step, not a grade, but yes, sir. Yeah. And that, with that one-
Well, call it a step.
Yeah. With that one, it's about a two percent adjustment per year.
But they don't change from one step to the next every year, do they, or do they?
That would be up to you. I've seen it both ways. So some people will do a step per year, other ones, it's a step every two years.
Okay. So the staff that is not on the step plan, which is the rest of the organization outside of police, fire, EMT, et cetera, how do they see their salary growth under this program?
So for your general plan, that open range would be based on your compensation philosophy. So you want to ha, it's a merit-based adjustment, it's a COLA adjustment, whatever budget allowing percentage increase that you could do in any given year.
Okay. So what that says from a perspective of an employee, there isn't, in the step plan, there isn't the incentive to perform well. There is only the incentive to not perform poorly.
That's one of the negatives of a step plan, yeah. So it is, it is, it is, it's more restrictive. You have, you've got more flexibility with the open range.
Yeah. I, I came out of an R and D environment kind of thing, so everything was paid for performance, and we had performance grades and so forth. And if you were on performance improvement program, you were skating on Barry St. Ice, and if we had to do a layoff, you were-
You were first.
You were the one to go. I've always resisted that because I believe that in any line of work, you have a wide range of performers and, I, I just have an inherent problem with that. Okay, so, um, another concern I have is that unlike other things, salary is with you forever. There's no going back. In other words, I don't remember now, I haven't looked at our, shoot, our, our planned budget. I think we're about forty million dollars for the general fund, if I remember rightly, but I'm not sure of that. Anybody that can, uh, some-
Around there, thirty-six, forty.
Does that sound right?
Thirty-six to forty, somewhere, I mean, I think.
Forty-six?
Thirty, somewhere, thirty-six to forty, somewhere. You're about-
Yeah, I think, I think it's around forty. One of your plans here is a four million dollar increase.
No, um, no, sir. So there was a correction to that. What, what that was on that option, the part, your part-time positions were not all being prorated based on time, and so I corrected that for time. So what you'll see here is, is that has since come down.
What is it?
Um, I think that was the, let me go back to the slide. I think it was the move, the move to market. Yeah. I think there was a move to market, if I remember right. All, all of your, all of your, um, part-timers were being costed out at a full-time position. So I adjusted that formula to fix that salary for you.
So we went from four million dollars to one point two million?
One point, one point three there.
Okay. Wow, you can see why I didn't like that program.
Right.
Um, I mean, that, the problem is, that lives with you forever. You put that into the program, next year, you're not going to say, oh, well, we're going to take some of that out. We're, we're not going to cut costs by, by reducing salaries to accommodate that.
Right.
Not in a rational world anyhow. Okay. What are we looking for tonight? Jackson or new city manager? Are we, what's our implementation schedule on this?
If I may speak. This is just for information purposes, Councilman. Ultimately, I would like to bring it back to the council to vote for approval of one of the plans at the May's first meeting.
Okay. That gives me an idea. I think we're going to end up having some more discussions between now and then, for sure. Okay, I'll let it go at this point.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carr.
All right. Thank you all for coming. I noticed when I saw you all out, there were two ladies in green. I said, well, this must be the evergreen company.
We did do that.
I got that much right. Glad to have you all here. We've been waiting on this thing. Yes, first question, well, I'd like to have a copy of the actual study. I mean, this is a presentation, but-
Yes.
I'm assuming it's an electronic version. I don't want the paper version of that. I'd imagine this a lot, but I really want to get into the, look, take, take a look at the weeds of this thing. This was something that we bit it out?
Yes, we did.
We did. Okay. All right. That answers my first questions. I had a couple of issues here. I wanted to kind of get some clarification on, uh, so packet page sixty, the assessment, assessment of current conditions. So I see the fifty-five best practice, we're between fifty and seventy percent. So I'm assuming, obviously, that means we're low in terms of structural organization. We're on, it sounds like, looks like we're on the low end of structure.
You are, but given the size of your organization, it, it may be appropriate.
Well, I think there are some structural changes we need to consider making. And city manager, I want to make sure you're following a lot of this in terms of what we're looking at as we, you know, kind of look through this stuff. I could tell you a lot of things, I think, that need to be, you know, tweaked a little bit here and there, but, um, the other side of it, compression between employees, uh, this fifty-six point one percent. So where do we fall compared to other cities in, in, in comp studies?
Well, it depends. You know, a lot of the projects that we've looked at, when you come in to do the study to make an adjustment on the level that we're talking about here, that ten to twelve percent, the vast majority of those peers do see a lot of compression within those quartiles. They really do. And, and so you're about what I would have expected. So fifty-six percent below that midpoint, you know, we need to help maybe distribute some of those a bit more through those other quartiles.
Is a ten to twelve percent, you know, market where we're at, is that extremely low in the average, or?
Coming out of the last few years that I, I called dynamic is the best word I can think of for them, it's about standard. A lot, most organizations we've been working with in, in multiple different states, they've looked at adjustments anywhere from seven to fifteen percent.
Okay. So, so we're in the, in the mid.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to know where we, where we stand in comparison to other outfits that you, that you do this for. Page, page sixty-two here, market salary survey. The ninety-three classifications, that's what you use for us overall, right?
Chose ninety-three of your classifications to use as our benchmarks. So those are the classifications we took to your peer organizations.
Okay. Is that the total number of our classifications, Dwight, or is it?
No, it's not.
Okay, I didn't think so. Do these ninety-three classifications start at the lowest position salaries, salaried amount?
They go from the, the lowest to the highest. So we covered all of the pay grades and all the different departments.
But they're not all of the, the-
Not every single one.
Classes. But they do cover the lowest paid, the lowest pay grades, the lowest pay-
Yes, those are included, but you have some positions that are all within the same pay grade, so-
Okay.
So they're all in ninety-three.
Got it, got it. Okay. Uh, on the same page here, uh, we see twelve percent below market minimums, fourteen percent below mid, ten below maximum. I guess the question is, wh, wh, where did the majority of our salaries lie, I guess, in a sense? In, in which category? In terms of what, what percentage of our staff as a whole, whether they lie in terms of, you know, is there a percentage of, you, you follow what I'm asking, I guess?
I think I do. So, so what you're looking at here, this is based on your salary ranges, right? So this is the salary scale you have right now and how that compares to your, your peer organizations. If you're looking at the individual level salaries, of course, I, it's not a static number, it changes, and it also depends on the classification. Some of your classifications were well below market. Some of them were thirty percent below. Others were, you know, up to, you know, fifteen, fifteen, twenty percent above. But the vast majority of your positions were closer to market average and then, like I said, below.
Okay. On the packet page sixty-four, I had a few questions on that one. So, again, I guess this, this, this is just a snapshot. This isn't all of the grades, I'm assuming, right?
For, is, am I on the right slide?
Yep.
This would be all of the, the new pay grades. So all of your classifications would be assigned to one of these pay grades.
Okay. So why is this, just this proposed salary plan not starting with our lowest paid staff members? I don't see that here.
It is.
It's just in the salary form versus the hourly rate.
So CPO one is the minimum that anybody could possibly make here?
Yes.
And is that, is that still the fifteen, or what is it?
Yes, the decent one.
Okay. All right. And, you know, one of the things I'm interested in, in terms of part of this whole study in general, was making sure that staff members who are paid the least, you know, obviously get the compensation they deserve first and foremost. And we got other staff that needs to get compensated as well, but, um, you know, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm not happy with the lower salaries in terms of being at the lower grade progression percentage. Seems like the higher up you go here, uh, in terms of salary, the percentage increases here. And, you know, and I, I don't want it to come off where it's, you know, you know, conceptually, is this skewed towards, you know, salaries north of fifty, or, or is this just the way things fall in terms of the grade progression to your?
So your grade progressions, what we did there, you'll notice that it's five percent grade progression between that first half of, of the pay plan, and then seven and a half, ten, and then that, that final. What that's allowing us to do is to give you enough pay grades to meet your needs and even let you grow with it some, but we also then were able to eliminate some pay grades that you weren't using at all. So that way, when you see go from five to seven half to ten, I'm increasing in levels of leadership. So that's where you're having, your managers, your assistant directors, those levels to create that separation.
And I see, I mean, you get the skew when you get to upper management, when you get to the bigger money at the end, it, it looks like.
No, no, well-
The percentage increase.
But that, but that's not an increase off your current plan. That's just the design of this particular structure. Your bigger adjustments are, I would say, below fifty, as far as salaries for your individuals.
Well, I, and I certainly think that's where the biggest adjustments need to probably happen. Um, I, for one, I prefer merit-based over any other, you know, compensation concept. Couple of other questions I had. Page sixty-seven in my packet here. Uh, and, uh, yeah, the step plan slides and all of the final implementations, we don't have that in the packet, so if we could get that electronically, too, that would be good-
Yeah, I already said it.
Good information to have that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, so, you know, I guess tenure in general seems to skew more towards upper management just by nature, I guess. If you're compensated better, obviously what you are, if you, you know, you've got a college degree, you've got more skill sets, the whole nine. But, uh, so I've seen a lot of this is factored in based, you know, some of these options and, you know, they, they have a lot of tenure based in them. So, again, that's why I, I always fear it skews towards upper, upper management, upper, you know, you know, in, in terms of how you do your calculus for your, your piece, because I see so much tenure in, involved in these, in these, uh, implementation options, for instance. You said that the estimate here in terms of the move towards market, that, that last three T on page sixty-seven, you said it was just over one point two, and what exactly does that mean?
That's what it would cost to place all of your employees onto this new pay plan and then adjust their salaries accordingly.
Okay, that was, that was the one point two. Okay. That was the one point two. Okay, that, that changed from the four point one.
Oh, yes.
Got it. And the groups of employees here, I guess the largest number, what, are we still at about four fifty?
No, we're, we're right at four hundred.
We're, we're at four hundred. So this, this, these are the maximum, these four oh five, this four oh two, these, this is everybody in these. Okay. I, I just worry about how we're going to do this, and I don't think this is something that we implement all at once necessarily, um, when you bring back the options or, and I don't know how we, you know, when you bring what you're going to bring back to us, we're going to take a look at options in terms of, you know, I'm hoping all the options aren't a one-time deal. This is over, over years in terms of, you know, how, how we do things. I, I just think it's really important from residence perspective, and my big worry is, you know, fifty and under. From a residential standpoint, um, by the way, you know, those are the ones that pay all the bills around here. The front-facing, direct-to-residence, customer service employees, um, the forty K and below, that range, that's the range, that's the class of staff where I think we probably fall short more than anywhere else, you know, within the, you know, salary range universe. I often say that, you know, the lower-paid folks, a lot of times tend to be some of our hardest workers. Not that upper management does not work hard, don't get me wrong, but in terms of dollar for dollar and front-facing to our residents, um, most residents don't see upper management. You, you follow what I mean? But the level of service that we're providing, what they see out on the streets, what they see front-facing is what matters, and those are the lowest-paid folks. I always say, you know, a dollar raise or a two-dollar raise to someone that's making fifteen dollars an hour, that's a big deal.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, if you're making sixty, sixty-five, sixty-nine, seventy, you know, if you get a one-dollar raise, well, it's- And, I mean, if you're making sixty, sixty-five, sixty-nine, seventy, you know, if you get a one-dollar raise, well, that's, that's great too. But it can be life-changing on the other end of the spectrum. That's the probably, you know, that, that's, that's really, really, really important to me. So I'm, I'm glad we did this. I, I figured we were low. The question is, you know, if you know you're low, we gotta make some adjustments, but at the end of the day, you know, how are we gonna pay for it? So that's a whole nother conversation. I think you guys did a pretty thorough job here, and we appreciate the presentation. All right, thanks.
Absolutely.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see some of the, the data too. I look at pay for performance, and I hate to put people together based on their performance, so I think there's gotta be some of that. We definitely need to, to look at our pay grades. We definitely need to, to look at our salaries, because I think we are below. When you did your comparison, you know, with, with other areas and so forth, did you look and consider those salaries where people were getting a pension or a 401K? Or half and half, or how did, did you take that into consideration at all?
We didn't look at benefits. This was salary only.
Just strictly salary?
This was salary.
Okay. Okay, and then I, I'm glad you clarified, page sixty-two, where you said twelve percent were below minimums. You know, you, first I looked at that and I said, well, eighty-eight percent are above, and you said, well, most of them are right there at the, at the break-even, I guess, point.
Plus or minus five. Yeah, but, and you do have a few that are higher than that, but you have a lot more that are sitting in that minus, minus, that minus ten area.
Way below, yes.
You have some that are way below. Your, your communications is way below, dispatch.
Well, I'm glad you gave us all this information. I'd like to, you know, we need to digest a lot of it, because there's a lot to digest. There's a lot of different areas, and, and so I appreciate all your time here and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilman Gay?
I just have two quick questions. A housekeeping question. It's seven fifty-two, and I would ask that our workshop agenda be mindful of our regular session agenda, please. The second question I have, and Councilman Allen asked, but I just want to follow up on the question. How can we intelligently decide on this if we don't consider what cities offer the other pay benefits? We have utility credits, we have pensions. So how, how do you advise we compare this with other similar cities unless we factor in those?
So for that, this project only called for the compensation of, of the salaries, comparison of the salary scales, and then employee adjustments based on that? Of course, you do have to factor, when you're looking at costs especially, what would it cost when you include the full benefits? And what that percentage increase is. If that's something you guys are interested in us collecting for you for a comparison, we can definitely talk about that.
Oh.
Wait, hold on a second. Councilman Gay?
I'm done.
Okay. Councilman Carr?
I think honestly, I mean, I think we're, I think we're pretty rich when it comes to, you know, benefits. I've seen some other cities that do a little better, but for the most part, I think we're more to the good. Now, years ago, we were really, really pretty, 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 uh, rich in terms of benefits, but I think we, we need to get across this bridge first and then take a look at that, you know, at, at some point too.
So in twenty-ten, our employees did not get a raise. In twenty-eleven, they did not get a raise. In twenty-twelve, they did not get a raise. In twenty-thirteen and twenty-fourteen, they got two percent raises. In twenty-fifteen, they got one and a half percent. In sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, they got two percent. Nineteen, they got one percent. Twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, due to COVID, no raise. Twenty-twenty-two, they got five percent. We are way behind the ball. If there is anyone here who thinks that we are competitive, where we need to be, your thorough, detailed report has confirmed the direction that we need to go in, because every person who shows up and puts on the uniform of City of College Park, answers phones, picks up trash, directs a department, they are all here to serve the residents and the visitors and the business owners of this community. And we need to acknowledge that and to recognize that we have not served them to our fullest capacity, and it's about time where we put our money where our mouth is. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we will begin at eight o'clock. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. It is eight oh three PM. We have a full quorum with councilmembers Clay, Karn, Allen, and Gay present, so at this time I will call the meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our invocation is being handled by Chaplain Walker this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May we join in a word of prayer. In the stillness of this moment, let us join our hearts and our minds to hear that soft but certain whisper, reminding us that there's a spiritual dimension to our lives and to the work of the City Council of College Park. May that voice stir the importance of this council meeting. In the midst of the social unrest and threats of destructive forces locally and nationally and in the world, let us be humble and humble ourselves to be mindful of universal values for all people. Aid us, O God, to lift our minds and hearts to be brave, to be bold, to be honest in our deliberations for the welfare of our community. May we join our hearts and our minds to be aware and to be grateful for the work of our mayor and city council. May they strive to do their best to represent our social concerns and the sureness of purpose and responsibility in these confused times and the anxiety that we all have to experience. We yearn for individuality and we're, we yearn to be heard collectively. So may this civil meeting assist all to discover the courage to be whole, loving, and responsible citizens of College Park. May we shift our thoughts to the appreciation and the articulation for all of those who work for College Park. May we leave this meeting renewed and reassured that we have worked together for our common good, that we have put aside our prejudice, our doubts, our casting blame in our ongoing struggles with the dark forces of society that seek to blow out our candles of hope, to silence the voice of universal compassion, to unhinge us from self-centeredness. May we leave this meeting with the awareness that all people are created equal, to have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in College Park and in this nation. We offer our thoughts and our thanks and our feelings in the name above all names of faith, hope, and love. Amen.
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 Mr. Myers? Any additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda? I know Mr. Hawthorne is here, and I, I, and we are so glad to have him here. It is his first day as city manager in the great city of College Park. But, Mr. Hawthorne, if you were prepared to answer that question, I will, I will hand it to you.
Well, he told me what to say, Mayor.
Okay.
No additions or deletions.
All right. Any, any additions, deletions, amendments, or changes from the body?
I have a potential addition. I think this might have been overlooked. Jackson, I know we talked about having a budget discussion, and you had set it for the March twentieth meeting. I guess it probably fell through the cracks. But, uh, I don't know if there's time tonight, but I think it's important enough to make a little time for it in terms of, uh, just in general. I think most of us got our books, but I just wanted to talk about in general, before we started in on our budget, we would usually have some type of discussions in terms of expectations, what direction we're looking to go in and the like. As you all remember, last year's budget was a little bit tumultuous, more or less. So, uh, I'd like to discuss it. I, I really think it's important if we can get through all this other stuff pretty quickly.
Okay, we can put that in the City Manager's report.
Well, as long as it's a full discussion with everyone, that's fine.
We can add that to the City Manager's report. Any others? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. We'll move on to Item 3A, which is approval of the regular session minutes from March 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 3B is approval of the workshop session minutes from March 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous as well. We are on to proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements. Our first one is a presentation of a proclamation to Jackson Myers in appreciation of his dedicated service to the City of College Park as interim city manager. The second is a presentation of a proclamation to the Georgia Resilience and Opportunity Fund. The third is a presentation of a proclamation designating April 23rd to 29th, 2023, as Georgia Cities Week in the City of College Park. And then we will present the City All-Star of the Month and our new employees. City of College Park proclamation, recognizing Jackson Myers. I just want to clap it back. Whereas we recognize Mr. Jackson Myers for his exemplary skills in management, city government, and his ability to adapt quickly and accept the challenges before him. And whereas with 16 years of military experience in the United States Army and 17 years of service with the City of College Park, Mr. Myers' passion lies at the helm of engineering, where his success is indisputable. He is also the first to acknowledge and spearhead the renaming of City Hall in honor of Mayor Jack P. Longino. And whereas Mr. Myers has been recognized for his leadership within the City of College Park in the state of Georgia, after several predecessors said no, Mr. Myers was able to have a quiet zone on Main Street so that the train would not disrupt the local businesses and residents. This even led to parklets along Main Street for the local restaurants and citizens to enjoy. And whereas Mr. Myers has served in the interim city manager position from June 14th, 2022 until April 3rd, 2023, and during his tenure has acquired millions of dollars of grant money for the city, including gaining money for COVID relief for residents' utilities who lost their jobs. And whereas during his time as interim city manager, Mr. Myers' stewardship allowed the city to confront many challenges while improving employees' access to affordable health care, discovering, mentoring, and developing talent within the organization. And whereas Mr. Myers' dedication to the City of College Park is unparalleled, and we are forever grateful for his willingness to serve. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park recognize Mr. Jackson Myers for his extraordinary performance as interim city manager this third day of April, 2023.
Good evening, everybody. So basically, anyway, basically, you know, when I came to College Park, I wanted to leave College Park better than when I came. So when I came, like they said, in June of 2005, I try, I worked hard and in due diligence to bring, you know, a new College Park. It really made a change from restrooms, not restrooms in parks, but restrooms at the Brady Center and some of the other areas. But I wanted it sidewalks, and they did mention the quiet crossing, but there, but we've got trails and we've got new bridges. And we connect in the 6 West to the GICC. We're connecting the GICC to downtown. You know, we did lower, we've, we've got a new road street, which is now Lottie Miller Boulevard. You know, there's a lot of things that, that really have changed the face. Also worked on the arena a little bit, but Mercedes Miller led that more than I did. Thanks.
So City of College Park proclamation for the Georgia Resilience and Opportunity Fund, whereas the City of College Park is made better by improving the economic security of its residents, and the Georgia Resilience and Opportunity Fund, also known as the Grow Fund, has established a guaranteed income initiative focusing on Black women, which has enrolled 204 women in our city. And whereas the Grow Fund contacted thousands of residents through door knocking, community events, partner organizations, and digital outreach to encourage applications from those individuals who could most benefit from participating in the program. And whereas program participants report significantly improved well-being as a result of their enrollment in the In Her Hands Guaranteed Income Initiative. And whereas the program has already brought nearly $1.5 million into the community. And whereas this program helps us imagine new possibilities in the struggle to eliminate poverty and close the racial wealth gap. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park, Georgia, recognize the Grow Fund for bringing an innovative and transformative guaranteed income program to our community and commits itself to exploring creative programs to build economic security for our residents in the future. Proclaim this third day of April, 2023. And in a point of personal privilege, we are, we are here with two of the spearheads of this program, Hope Wallen-Sack and Councilmember Amir Faroki from the great city of Atlanta, who, we are not strangers. No, we are not strangers. We have known each other for a little bit longer than I want to admit, but when Councilmember Faroki called me about this program and said, would you be interested, the first thing I said was yes, how do we sign up? And so we are so grateful that ultimately we were selected, that people's lives are being changed and transformed by this, and would love to hear from the two of you just about how it's changing lives across the state.
Thank you, Mayor Broom and to the City Council. Mayor Broom did not give the full status of our backgrounds. We, we were college classmates a long time ago, so it's good to be with you. My name is Amir Faroki. I represent pretty much the center city on the City Council in Atlanta. And a few years ago, I started thinking, you know, we talk a lot in Atlanta about the lack of economic mobility. In fact, we have the worst economic mobility in the country. If you're born poor in Atlanta, Metro Atlanta, you're 96% certain to remain poor in the city of Atlanta and in Metro Atlanta. But underneath that is a lot of economic insecurity. Folks who, if you get a flat tire, if you have an unexpected medical bill, you have to make a hard choice between paying for food for your kids or that emergency, or maybe even your housing. And so with Hope, we started a task force looking at the idea of a guaranteed income for our most vulnerable residents, who are almost always Black and almost always women, who are oftentimes caretakers for children or parents, folks who are really at risk of being displaced from housing or finding themselves in crises because of a mild economic shock that you or I may be, may be able to stomach. But for folks who are truly low income, it causes enormous emotional and mental stress on a day-to-day basis. And so we had this idea, and we went to the, the private sector and philanthropy. We didn't use any public funds, and we launched a guaranteed income program for primarily Black women, starting in the old Fourth Ward, a neighborhood I represent in the state of Atlanta. But we quickly realized, because there was so much philanthropic support, that we could do this across the state. And so we have a, an urban market, which is Atlanta. We have a suburban market here in College Park, and we have a rural program in southwest Georgia. Over 600 women across the state are receiving $850 a month for two years. And we're studying mental and physical well-being outcomes, economic job outcomes, how it's impacting kids if they have children. But as Mayor Broom mentioned, there's 204 women in College Park who are participating in the program. And I will turn it over to Hope, who is really the leader of this work on a day-to-day basis. It does not run out of my council office. We spun off a nonprofit called the Georgia Resilience and Opportunity Fund a couple of years ago. Hope is the executive director and the real reason this has been such a success. So it's an honor to be here, but I want you to hear from Hope on everything that's going on in College Park.
Thank you, Mayor, and we am grateful. This tremendous honor. We're so glad to be able to partner with College Park. And this was our third site for the program that launched just last year. Since the launch of the program, we've learned a little bit about the recipients in our program, and it's given a greater depth to our understanding of what economic insecurity looks like. We know folks across groups are resilient and resourceful, but the challenges folks are facing just don't add up. Even for somebody who is incredibly savvy, someone who is, who is making it work to the best of their ability, there's a lot of systemic challenges that make it really hard to get ahead. The average participant in our program makes about $16,000 a year in College Park and has on average one to two kids and has about $35,000 in debt, across all forms of debt. That is to say, folks, these moms are, but for the most part, really looking to make it work, but they have tremendous economic challenges before them. After just a few months of being enrolled in our program, and we provide an average of $850 a month for two years, for a total of over $20,000 over those two years, so almost increase in people's incomes about 70%. After just a few months of being enrolled in our program, recipients reported, 94% reported that they used some of that money to cover a financial emergency. 55% just after a few months said that they were able to save. That was people's number one goal. They wanted to have just a little bit of buffer because it helps to reduce stress really significantly. The number of people who said they could afford childcare triples, right? That releases all types of economic opportunities for moms. And so we view this as not just an investment in those individuals, but in the whole economy of an area can thrive better when folks are able to enter the workforce who have amazing skill sets to offer. And so we know that this is just the beginning. It is a two-year program that's going to conclude towards the end of 2024, and we're learning all across the way. We hope that this program will inform public policy findings, not just here in, in the city of College Park, but might inform what we do across the state of Georgia or maybe the country. We can envision a world where poverty doesn't exist, and we believe that's starting right here, right now. So tremendous thanks to the many community members, and I recognize some faces here, who helped us launch the program. It wouldn't have been possible without you. We wouldn't have had Community Trust without you. We wouldn't have been able to reach this one without you. And huge thanks to the mayor and the council for helping us as well. We are incredibly grateful. So thank you all so much.
Can't tell all the secrets now, but so good to see you. All right. So later on this month, it is Georgia Cities Week. Very excited. As the third vice president of the Georgia Municipal, Georgia Municipal Association, I serve as the chair of Georgia Cities Week this year, and it is something we have celebrated on multiple occasions before, but we are doing it big. There's an ice cream truck involved. All right. Proclamation of the City of College Park recognizing Georgia Cities Week and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the City of College Park, Georgia, that the week of April 23rd to 29th, 2023 is hereby proclaimed Georgia Cities Week. Be it further proclaimed that the City of College Park encourages all citizens, city government officials, and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated. Proclaim this third day of April, 2023. And I see that we have got some of the people that make our city work. And it is so important because, as the proclamation said, we really are the closest to, to people. I don't know that I've ever been in the grocery store on Main Street, Eden Fresh, where, you know, formerly Wayfield, where somebody didn't ask me a question about something that's going on in the city. And we love it. We absolutely love being a part of this community in every single way. And the 400 employees who work for the City of College Park get up to serve this community every day, day in, day out, to make College Park an amazing, productive place. We are grateful to you for your dedication and your service to our city, and we look forward to celebrating it. Ms. Ames, can you talk a little bit about what Georgia Cities Week is going to entail? Just a couple of things.
A couple of things on the agenda is a Friday Night Lights event that's happening on April 28th. It's free to the public. Just come out, wear your light-up accessories, enjoy the music and the food. Another event is touch a truck. We have partnered with the various city departments to have their truck displayed, and all the kids can jump on the trucks and blow the horn and push the light button. It's kind of fun. Yeah, ice cream trucks as well is also free to the residents and everyone that's here. So, yeah, that's a couple of events.
Yeah, but we've got more.
We got more.
Where's Dr. Baker? There he is. Dr. Baker, it is your time to shine, sir. I think we've got an all-star we need to acknowledge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I want to introduce all of the new employees that were hired in the month of March. If you are a new employee hired in the month of March, please come forward, state your name, your department, and your position. All new hires, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Sharir Ahmed. I work for College Park PD, and I got hired in the month of March. It's a pleasure working for the city and protecting and serving the city. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lunik.
Good evening, my name is Lunick Augusteve. I also was hired in the month of March for Police Department, and I'm proud and ready to serve.
Hi, my name is Keisha Gaz, and I am Communications Coordinator for the Communications Department.
I'm Andre Armstrong. I'm a new rehire. I originally was here from 2011 to 2013 in the Police Department. Went away, I'm the prodigal son, came back. And so, I'm just here to serve again in the Police Department.
I have the honor and the pleasure of introducing the All-Star of the Month for March 2023. This employee was hired February 2021. Still being employed with the city, this employee has proven to be a valued asset and employee, and is excellent at providing safety to our citizens. This employee goes above and beyond and is always on time. This employee serves as a member of the College Park SWAT team. He is responsible, reliable, honorable, and trustworthy. Additionally, this employee's work ethic and efforts make the city of College Park safer for the citizens. The All-Star of the Month for the month of March 2023 is Police Officer Quentin Hill of the College Park Police Department.
So I had a lot to say before, but I'm gonna keep it short. I'm just appreciative of this opportunity, and I just can't wait to continue to protect and serve.
Okay, we are moving on to remarks of citizens. Ms. Ames, can you lay out the parameters and let us know if anyone signed up?
If you are able to sign in before seven, I can read your name and your topic of discussion. If you emailed your comments and before seven, I can read your email comment. If you did not get a chance to sign in or send an email, you can speak after all comments have been heard. For three minutes. The first comment I have is from, I believe it's from Jennifer Boswell and Stacy Witchell, but they were with Evergreen Solutions. So, let's get those two. The next one I have is from Matt Long, RSG, to discuss contractor payment project. Okay. Okay, and Stacy Stewart and Jason Stanfield is also with that group. The next comment I have is Jamel McKenzie, 2447 Odell Way, to discuss College Park.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamel McKenzie. I live at 2447 Odell Way. And I'm just here to just talk about some great things going on in our city. First of all, I want to thank you, I want to welcome Mr. Hawthorne to our city. I'm a community person, and on behalf of the community, we are so happy to have you here. So we just want to say, welcome, 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 and we've been looking forward to you getting here. I also want to say a very special thank you to my friend Jackson Myers for holding it down. Did a fantastic job, Jackson. And I know we've already, you know, given you some props, but we really thank you for holding the city together during this time as our interim manager. And Jackson had a lot of things he went through, but he still stayed steady, and just really, we appreciate you. Also, on March 25th, we had like an amazing citywide cleanup, and I wanted to thank Ms. Frances Kennedy and her team. We got people out in the neighborhood, and I also want to thank my neighbors from the Lynx, and we had some other neighbors in Ward 1 that were out, and we're just picking up trash. And I just am grateful for the city having this type of event that we can, as citizens, you know, make it known that we want to have a beautiful College Park. So I just want to thank everybody for that. I also enjoyed Dr. Chisulu's presentation. He's been working on that for a long time, and I want to say thank you to council members for, you know, your remarks today regarding that, and really looking forward to how we can bring even more unity to this amazing community. Also, I want to thank the Grow Fund people. I knew that they were going to be on today for the fact that now we have 204 women in the city of College Park that can breathe. I had the opportunity to work with In Her Hands along with Ignite and identifying these women, and we're just so excited. Because these women now are receiving this $850 a month, we're not getting as many phone calls because they don't need us for certain things that they may have needed us before. So we're able to concentrate on some other programs that we can bring to person. So we're very excited about those women in our community that are receiving that. And lastly, I wanted to say that this coming week, we're getting ready for Easter, and Ignite will be sharing love throughout this community to our senior citizens and families throughout the city of College Park. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of Easter eggs that we will be doing Easter egg hunts all throughout the city this week. So we're excited about that and just happy for the opportunity to serve this amazing city. I want to thank each of you, mayor, and all four of our council persons for your service. We know it's not an easy job, but somebody has to do it, and you all do it well. Thank you so much to everyone, and have a good one.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
The next comment I have had been emailed in by Tom Coleman, and it reads, Dear Madam and Sirs, having observed council meetings for many years, I have noticed a practice which I suggest can be improved on. A legitimate problem will be noted, and the council immediately attempts to craft legislation on the fly. An often hastily worded motion will be made if each councilman in turn gives their feelings on the subject and suggests wording changes. Occasionally, the city attorney will be asked a question, and he will, by necessity, give his unresearched opinion. The motion is then voted on. Might I suggest that this largely ad hoc process does not give time for explicit wording to accomplish the desired task, does not permit adequate time for reflection on the issue, generally leaves out input from the staff who implement the motion's directions, and allows for no citizen comments? The resulting product can often yield unintended consequences. Perhaps the council, in its wisdom, could adopt a procedural flow something along these lines. Number one, a sponsoring council member would define the problem to be solved, research solutions, and come up with a draft of explicit wording for the motion. Number two, this draft and any supporting information being necessary will then be given via email to the mayor and fellow council members, as well as the city manager and attorney.
Ms. Ames, could you speak a little closer into the microphone? Thank you.
The draft will be posted on the city website with the sponsoring council member's contact information. The city manager can forward the draft to affected departments. Comments can then flow to the sponsor. The sponsoring council member may then revise the draft wording and schedule either a workshop session if the issue seems complex and needs discussion for better clarification, or an agenda item for the next city council meeting for an intended vote. In all cases, the final draft should be published at least one week before a vote, so as to allow citizen comments. Any last amendment should push the vote off until these changes can be published a week prior to any vote. The above procedural flow will require a good deal of work by a sponsoring council member. The total time for a motion to reach a vote will indeed be extended. However, I can recall very few issues that require any more immediate treatment. Motion resulting from above procedural flow would have the great benefit of considered input from more affected departments. The wording will be crafted or delivered. There would be no impression that any motion was rushed through the body. And I suspect council meetings will not drag on late into the night as the majority of deliberation and discussion will be done beforehand. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment is from Demetrius Taylor, and it reads, Greetings and salutations, mayor, council, and our new city manager. I am Demetrius Taylor, Secretary and Parliamentary for the College Park Citizens Association, and I reside in Ward 2 in Barker Dura Club Apartments. I have a few questions that are plaguing my mind, and I hope that at some point, someone will give some answers. Number one, I understand the budget has been secured to this fiscal season, but are we looking into innovative, creative ways to generate more money into the city to cover salaries? I've been looking at the salary for new police officers that we are in need of, and we are starting them at $52,000 a year, which amounts to $25 an hour. Yet, we have other departments that are not nearly as dangerous or life-threatening and are making nearly twice as much simply because they have a degree. Do we need to ask our officers to have criminal justice degrees in order to get more higher wages? Number two, there are metal coverings on Southern Road and a couple other places around the city that denote some kind of digging and/or pipe work being done. Is the city doing, or is that attributed to the businesses? These metal coverings need to be readjusted on Southern Road, and they appear to be slipping, and one can begin to see into the hole it's supposed to cover. When is this construction going to end? Number three, we have signs up and chatter about the 6th West development, but where do we stand on actual movement? Can the citizens get an update on who is working on what and what we can see tangible evidence of this development? Have we entertained the African-American and/or people of color contractors and developers to enrich the project? Councilman Karn, I'm asking, I am going to ask that answering this question becomes an agenda item so that citizens can be made aware of the progress. Number four, what has become a camp true? Since we've been embarrassed publicly, there has not been any official resolve on this matter from council. Are we going to go back to the drawing board with a new concept? Or have we become a county issue? Or have this become a county issue, and we've left this up to our commissioners to handle? Thank you for your time and careful consideration to what I've asked. I don't want this to go on deaf ears. I am looking for, wanting, and waiting for answers. Do the math, 1 plus 2 plus 3 plus 4 equals 1 College Park. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak at this time, please approach the podium and state your name and where you live. Seeing... Seeing no one approaching, we will move forward with the rest of the meeting. So, we have the consent agenda. I think based upon the conversation, we probably need to take these separately. So, item 6A1 is consideration of an action on bids received for material for upcoming construction and maintenance, and this is through the Power Department.
Boo for approval.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 6A2 is consideration of an action on a request for bid approval for roof upgrades for College Park City Hall.
Motion to accept the bid from the Wright Cars Group.
Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of a second. Is there another motion?
A motion to approve the bid that was recommended then.
For caliber construction?
That's, is that correct, Mr. Moody? Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Councilman Gay abstains. So, the motion passes with the votes of Councilman Clay and Councilman Allen in favor, Councilman Karn against, and Councilman Gay abstaining. Item 7A is consideration of an action on a request for a resolution from mayor and council in support of the Willingham Corridor LCI. Good evening, Ms. Hall Garrison.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, city of College Park has been working through the Aratropolis and with the cities of Haightville and East Point since February 2020 towards the Willingham LCI. In your packet was the full final draft of the, final draft of the LCI. And I am here, as well as Brian Durellis from the Aratropolis Alliance, to answer any questions as needed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hall Garrison. Questions for Ms. Hall Garrison? Councilman Clay?
We have actually talked about this before, and I thought we were pretty much in agreement to go forward on it. I think it's a good thing, and I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Karn?
All right, so you're asking for approval in terms of us drafting a resolution for this thing?
Yes, sir.
All right. Where are we at with the funding? I remember you said we were going to find some money somewhere else.
So this is in support of the Livable Centers Initiative for the Aratropolis. It specifies the corridor and creating activity between the nodes in the corridor.
Okay, in terms of the funding, how are we looking?
There is no funding. A resolution is requested so that we can go after additional funding for the corridor.
Right, understood, understood. So there's no update on the funding at all? I know we said we were looking for some other funding sources the last time you, when you presented the concept.
That's a separate thing.
That's another item, Joe. Different, whole difference.
Okay, so this isn't that project?
No, sir. This is the Willingham Corridor LCI.
Okay, got it. Okay, understood. Because I know that other project was in this area.
This is a joint thing with Haightville and East Point to do the overall improvements.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
Any other questions? Councilman, any other questions?
Oh, I'm good.
Councilman Allen?
No, I don't have any questions. That was it. One of the meetings, and it was well-presented, and thank you for bringing it to us.
Councilman Gay?
I just have one question, Ms. Garrison. The agenda that we have, is that a study that was done previously?
Yes, sir. That was a study that began in February 2020 that we collaborated with the tri-cities, as the tri-cities through the Aratropolis Alliance. So I just provided a final draft. A previous presentation was given by the Project Man... A previous presentation was given by the project manager, John Tully, and it was about last year that presentation was done.
Do you know if this was the original? The only reason why I'm saying is I cannot read it. It's like, it's a very nice study, but the text is like four points. I can't read it.
Yes, sir. I can forward that.
An electronic copy.
Okay. I can forward you the electronic copy, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item seven B is consideration of an action on a request authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with StanTech for services required through the Brownfield Grant Program. Ms. Hall Garrison, would you like to give us a little background?
Yes. So, City of College Park began applying through economic development for the Brownfield Grant beginning in 2015. We were awarded beginning in 2017, and since then, we have been awarded six additional grants. Currently, we have closed within fiscal year 2017, one point one million dollars, and we are currently managing a budget of one point six. We actually, in the last Brownfield, was received the largest grant in the nation.
Excellent. Questions for Ms. Hall Garrison? Councilman Clay?
No, I'm happy to get it, and I'm all for it. No questions.
Councilman Carn?
Uh, glad to see we got it. Uh, on the bid tabulation here, uh, so what's the estimated amount for this thing? And so, these outfits would submit a bid in terms of, uh, I guess what they want to do for us with this? They don't put in any fees, or?
So, the Brownfield Grant, um, basically, we pay twenty percent, and they reimburse us for eighty percent. So, the cost is associated to how much work is done under that grant.
So, in the bid, uh, when, this RFQ, so did they, in terms of scope of work, estimated costs? What, what did they, did it submit any cost in terms of? And I understand we're only in twenty percent for this thing, and I'm glad of it, but... Did it include any estimates from the, from the bidders, or?
Of the four submissions, um, three of those did. Um, the StanTech application actually provided the lowest amount when compared to the other three submissions that included cost estimates.
Okay, well, where are the cost estimates here? Because I see bid amount, and it says to be determined, to be determined. You said three of them put in an estimate?
Yes, sir. Um, if you could want to ask questions of purchasing.
Is there a reason why that's not on here, or?
When they submitted their proposals, it was not based on cost. It was based on their qualifications. However, three of the four did submit a cost breakdown for services. Three did include a fifteen percent addition for equipment rental. One did not even give us a, uh, cost of any services.
Was StanTech one of the ones that gave us an estimate?
StanTech, um, Terricon, and Nova did give us cost estimates. StanTech had the ten percent plus, no, it was ten plus fifteen percent, I'm sorry, ten plus ten percent for equipment rental. The other two were ten plus fifteen percent equipment rental. SERM did not give us any cost estimates.
Well, I'd like to see the estimates for these three. You know, I'd assumed, I was hoping they would be in this packet here, but I'd like to see those. So, get those to me if you can.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Allen?
No questions.
Councilman Gay?
I have a few questions, actually. Um, I've asked that no bid comes, at least that I can vote on, without seeing the bid package. I can't blindly bid. That's a city where two commissioners are going to prison. And the, and the, and the procurement manager. So, I'm being profound in saying, I don't want to vote on any project unless I can determine and discern what, what, what we're voting on. So, since, since this is my second time asking, I'm asking you to please provide bid packages for, at least for me to consider.
Are we looking for the recommended bid package, or you want to see all that come in? Because it was asked that I put in the specifications.
Well, I mean, we can, uh, meet, you know, with the city manager and the city attorney. We can all discuss it and come up with a solution that makes sense. The second question I have is on Brownfields. Uh, so this bid is to hire a consultant?
Yes, sir. That is a requirement of the grant.
All right. Now, we've had Brownfield grants previously. Did we have a consultant?
Yes, sir. It is a requirement of the grant.
And did they bid?
Cardno was actually purchased by StanTech, so this is the previous company, yes, sir.
That, that was the previous provider?
Yes, sir.
Because I was looking today in my office at the unsuccessful bidders, and I noticed you had in red, I guess in red, some notes about the strengths or weaknesses of each respondent. So, I was just curious. One of the unsuccessful bidders had very large projects, and there was a lot of remediation projects. And so, I was confused as to knowing, how do you all base the points on? How do you go about selecting one over the other?
Sure. So, I can't reference, as far as the questionnaire that was done in the red marking, as that was not mine. I can reference how I scheduled or viewed my own biddings. Um, as far as being that I had been informed of the Brownfield program and very active within the state and the national program since 2015, I looked at the type of projects that were done by each company. As far as for the company that ranked the lowest, um, majority of their team all placed on their resume, or as reference, a project that was smaller of nature, as well that was done in Mobile, Alabama. Um, as far as for the top two ranking, um, businesses, they also had work that was done on a local, um, level, as well as with government contracts that had been done on larger scales, and more notably, um, nationally-recognized, metropolitan-recognized programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman Carn.
So, yeah, so is there a reason why the estimates aren't in here?
As Moody stated, um, we did it as a qualification of skills, and as far as for their background regarding their applicableness to Brownfield.
Well, here's the thing. Anytime we're spending money up here, whether it's a grant or general funds, which this is a portion of, both, I need to see the amount we're spending and the estimated amount. Somebody is saying they can do a job for us for, to make a good decision. So, uh, you know, if someone's submitting a bid, and city manager, I guess this is for you too, anybody that's submitting a bid, and if they're submitting numbers, and they want us to make a decision on it, I want to see those numbers. Does that make sense? So, that's, next time, I want to make sure we see that, and if you can send it to everyone, that'd be great. But, uh, yeah, I'm not as comfortable bidding on something blindly in terms of I don't know what they're gonna charge for the work they're gonna do. So, yeah, if they're spending money, or if they're, if they're offering services for this amount, this estimated amount, I want to see what that is.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm gonna abstain on this one, but, uh, I'm not against it.
I'm gonna abstain as well.
All right. So, uh, we have Councilman Clay and Councilman Allen in favor, and Councilman Carn and Councilman Gay have abstained. Therefore, the motion passes.
Thank you.
City attorney, is that, uh, yeah, two abstentions, yeah.
Two abstentions means that you are not here? That two, two votes carry?
That's correct.
Item seven C, consideration of an action on a request to remove a weak water oak tree located at City Hall.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Carn. Go right ahead.
Well, I'm glad we got down to something that's a little bit more reasonable. I had, uh, called around to a few tree services, and, uh, I got quite a few trees cut out of my backyard years ago, and, uh, it was a lot less then, but, you know, for the amount, the original amount, I, you know, and, and someone told me this should be around ten thousand dollars. Now, obviously, it's not ten thousand dollars, but it's a lot better than the sixteen-five that we had, but, you know, that tree isn't that tall, it isn't that high up. And, uh, I know things are more expensive nowadays, but, uh, I'm glad you took another look at it and at least got it down some way, but I still think that's high.
I, I think part of the complication might be the fact that it's on us, right next to the main drag of the city and a state highway. I, I would agree with Councilman Carn. I, I think it's still high, but I think there are reasons for how they're going to have. I've had a number of trees taken down, and I think they're going to have to be a lot more careful and diligent with it being on a state highway.
Yes, that's correct. And I don't disagree, but I think also one of the reasons why it's so high is because it's, uh, sitting on City Hall property. And when people see City Hall, they think deep pockets.
And the use of cranes. They'll have to use, how many cranes, one or two, I think, I would imagine?
I think one.
I have a question.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman Gay.
Do we have an arborist report on that tree? Have you made that report available to us?
Yes. It should happen in your package.
Tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it's got four types of fungus, three or four types of different fungus.
What, what? Who, who made the decision to call it arborist? I'm, I'm just curious.
Who made the decision?
Yeah, that tree's been there for, what, a couple hundred years? Who, who, who in the administration said, hey, the tree got fungus? Let's, let's call it arborist? What, what indicated it?
Well, I walked City Hall a couple times, and I, and I noticed the tree. And, you know, my thing was why they didn't take the tree down when they took the first one down. We, one thing we don't want to happen is one of them limbs to fall and hit somebody that's walking through the sidewalk. And, uh, so I brought it to Jackson's attention, and he asked me to do what I need to do.
So, you, you called the arborist?
No, we had the tree company to, to do that.
So, you made the decision to cut a hundred-year oak down?
I didn't make the decision. The tree is old. I'm just doing something that will, will save the city money.
And how so?
If that, if a limb fall.
Well, we have limbs all over our city.
But you got, you have a...
I wasn't finished talking.
Go ahead.
I wasn't finished talking.
Go ahead.
All right. Having, what I'm trying to say is, I don't have a problem with you having the votes to cut a tree down, but I do have a problem for you cutting down a hundred-year oak. Well, there are communities that have laws against cutting those trees. And so, I did, I apologize. I didn't read that, uh, arborist report, neither did I get a second opinion. But just to say I'm walking around and I want to see a tree cut to save city money, we can have a conversation for several hours on how to save the city money. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Thank you. So, Councilman Clay, Councilman Carn, and Councilman Allen are in favor. Councilman Gay is opposed. The motion passes three-one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Appreciate it. We have no old business, no bids, change order requests, or contracts, no new business. City Attorney's Report.
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, um, I, I plan to, um, present to the council. I don't know if it's at the next meeting.
Winston, could you speak in the mic a little closer?
Yes, sir. Um, whether it be at the next meeting at the City Attorney's Report or before then, uh, just the, the, the steps in the process for disparity study. Uh, you may elect not to do it. It may not be something that's in the will of the council, but I at least want, um, to present you with some information that would provide you the information tools to decide whether that's something the city would like to pursue or not.
Thank you, sir.
I, I couldn't understand most of what you said, Winston.
Mr. Denmark said that he will be presenting information regarding a disparity study at, at the next City Man, City Attorney's Report. City Managers' Report. Who wants to go first?
I will defer to Mr. Myers.
All right.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right. That's good, because anyway, wanted to talk about the Global Gateway Pedestrian Bridge. It's, uh, it's my understanding that, and for all of you starting the first week in June ninth through the twelfth, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we're gonna close, uh, State Route Six, Camp Creek, to start the arcs, the legs, and putting in the arches. Right now, it's what it's scheduled. We're also gonna do a second weekend closing on June sixteenth through the nineteenth. And if CW Mathis may need a third weekend, but if they do, they only have to do a single lane closing. And we're working with the GICC and meeting with them to make sure that we don't have any, uh, big schedule events that they need to parking lot for over there, so we can actually put this bridge up. So, I'm working very closely with them, just to keep you abreast. On very important dates to meet, and mayor, council, and the citizens. Lottie Miller Boulevard, formerly, uh, Road Street. Uh, if you had a chance to go out there, the roundabout's been poured with concrete. It's got maroon color around it. Really looks pretty neat. The only thing that I, uh, that I would ask for you to ask the citizens, uh, we're going to light it up. I've already talked to Glenn and Hugh about putting lights at the, at the roundabout so people can see it when they drive, because they have a lot of problems. You know, sometimes they drive straight through the roundabout. But I was just wondering if you ever thought of something to be, talk to the citizens about putting something in the center of the roundabout. A fountain, statue, something along that line. Let the citizens make up some sort of mind, because it's a pretty good-sized roundabout. Uh, we also looked at, uh, you know, Representative Scott Williams. We submitted some more community project funding applications that we, that you asked about a little bit about that. It's about a new storage tank that we're going to try and protect our assets here in College Park. We're gonna try to put it over there, close to the, uh, getting with the airport and the car rental center to keep it open, because they couldn't open it up because we didn't have enough water over there, but we're putting a pump on it. We want to be able to also protect our arena. We want to protect the GICC by putting a million gallon, maybe a million-two gallon tank over there, and also to protect, because car rental is a big, big business to us, and we don't need the car rental center to be closed because of lack of water. So, we're trying, so we want to protect all of our assets over there, because they're, they're, they're big to our city. Uh, we'd also like to know if, uh, if we'd like to get ahold of Eric Robison. He's a facilitator for Georgia State University and Andrew Young School, uh, about putting another retreat together. You were asking about that.
I think he's from Carl Vinson, is he not?
Uh...
Carl Vinson Institute of Government?
Well...
Not Georgia State.
I got Andrew Young School. That's why I got it on my phone. I can get ahold of him anyway.
Okay.
Wherever he's at. So, anyway, also, uh, we got the Georgia Municipal Association. I keep reminding you, it's coming up, so a lot of us has already put in our, uh, to be able to go to Savannah. You all should know the dates. We've done, uh, Sonya's helped out a lot with the new city manager, and I wanted to say I wanted to welcome the new city manager, Stanley Hawthorne, to the City of College Park. And my behalf, and, uh, budget. Q and A. What's your Q and A?
All right, Councilman Carn?
Discussion.
Well, hoping we are all concerned with that. So, you, as you know, city manager, welcome. Glad to have you on board. Budget process, um, obviously very important. Probably the most important document, um, that we, uh, evaluate and assess and make a decision on, obviously. Um, I often hear from residents about it, and there, in my opinion, there's never enough participation from residents to come and see exactly how their money is being spent, uh, here. We used to have a pre-budget hearing and meeting where we would sit down and talk about the direction of, uh, what we, what we wanted in the budget, where we were going, where, where we were headed, what we were trying to accomplish. There've been some years where we've said, all right, we want everyone coming in five percent leaner, or so on and so forth, and, and give some direction before we go into the process. We got a lot of needs that have to be taken care of. we got a lot of needs that have to be taken care of. Uh, there's never gonna be enough money to take care of everything, but we want to try to prioritize, uh, you know, with our residents in mind first and foremost. Our businesses are very important as well. I always say they run a close second, uh, but residents are always first in my book. Uh, obviously, you can't do things without a strong business tax base as well, but uh, things are really tough out here, and every dime that people are spending in terms of what they're paying for and expecting for city services is just, it just keeps increasing. Um, I had finance pull some information for me, and uh, I was just looking at the rate of property tax increases just all around. I heard about the rate increases in East Point, and they were pretty substantial, and I said, well, I know that we're pretty much commensurate with them. Uh, we have two of the same tax rate sources, the county and the schools, of course, same school system, same county, and uh, out of the three that, he pulled some random addresses, these are homeowners, uh, not, not exempt with senior taxes. And two of the three were almost threefold tax increases from twenty-seventeen until twenty-two, almost three times as much in terms of property taxes. Uh, same thing in East Point, and when I talked to some folks in East Point, and I was at one of the, with some of the council members, and they talked about how high property taxes have gone up over there. It's the same over here, and I'd imagine it's the same in the other areas as well. Um, that's a pretty big pill to swallow in four, five years, a threefold, almost a threefold increase. Um, so this budget is very, very important. People are spending their money, and they want to know what they're getting for the services. At the end of the day, you know, if I were to ask one of our residents a question, you know, well, if you're paying close to three times the amount of property taxes, you know, are your level of services three times better, you know? Are, are, you know, are your streets gonna be paved three times as much? Or is, you know, so the answer's gonna usually be no to those questions. Uh, this is why it's so important to make sure that staff is on the case and doing the job that we need them to do in terms of the level of service, in terms of raising the bar, because it's, it's really crucial, and I just want to make sure that every dime that we spend, I want residents to feel that money. And I know there's a lot of non-front-facing systems and things that we have to purchase every year that they'll never understand or see about, but it's part of making the system work in terms of what they see out front. But uh, I want to make sure that we're up in that level of service, and a big part of why we got you here is to make sure that that happens, and, in, in, in new ways. Uh, there is a big need for improvement, uh, in terms of expectations. Uh, staff does a great job, don't get me wrong, but at the same time, the money that our residents are paying, this is why we need to raise the bar, uh, because they're certainly raising the bar in terms of taxes. And again, most of that's not the city of College Park, most of that's county and schools, of course, but uh, we just want to be cognizant of that. You know, every line that I look at, I say, how is this gonna affect our residents if we're spending this money? And I would like you to do the same. How is this gonna affect our residents if we spend this money? And, and, and I just want to take a more practical approach and more critical, and, and I really want us to budget more with a sense of concern and urgency this time around. Last year, uh, it was, it was a mess, to be honest. I'd never seen a budget process like that. But that was last year, and one thing about a brand-new year is you get to hit the reset button and, and, and make some improvements, so that's what we're looking forward to. Um, but uh, I want us to definitely take our time and make sure that we're spending the money appropriately where all of our residents would approve and understand, uh, why we're spending it, so. And if anybody else had any comments on, on what we're doing, or how we want to do it.
I have.
Councilman Clay?
Uh, yeah, I, several things I wanted to say about the budget. First off, as part of the budget meeting tomorrow night at six, six P M., I believe it is, six or six thirty? Six thirty.
Eighteen-thirty.
Thank you.
Military time.
Uh, at six-thirty tomorrow night, we will have our first budget meeting. And part of that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Althea, will be a presentation of overview of the budget. And I would hope that during that, uh, presentation, at the front end of the budget, we will have an opportunity to comment more when we have a bunch of numbers in front of us on very illustrative slides. Now, there are some in there now, uh, in the packet for the budget. The budget, by the way, people, is on the website, and you can download exactly what we're, we've got in the way of a budget book. I don't know that the overview is in there, uh, but there's another overview that, uh, Althea has distributed, I believe, and that will be, um, even more illustrative than what's in the packet initially. I happen to like the ones that are in the, in the packet online, because, uh, they get into some of the details the way I like to look at them, but I have not had a chance to review the slides in any great detail. I started a little bit on that, uh, working with the funds flow. But um, I think it's important, if you want to understand the budget, that people come-
To the meeting tomorrow night, because I think that's gonna be useful. Uh, in that regard, uh-
Last year, the twenty-twenty-three budget we were putting together, uh, we had six-million-dollar potential from, uh, power, coming from the, uh, data mining, cryptocurrency, what-have-you facility down on Godby Road. It's a major, uh, cloud-in-the-sky installation, multiple processors there. Uh, they consume huge amounts of power, and uh, they were projecting potentially six-million dollars of revenue, I mean, pure revenue. Uh, that was not put in the budget. Last year, we increased the, uh, millage rate for this year, and I was hopeful that this year, with the inclusion of something on the order of six-million dollars coming in from power, which power does owe the general fund money from past years, uh, that maybe we could actually drop the millage rate. We had held it constant for, what was it? Twelve years?
Yes.
A long, long time. We had held it constant.
Over ten.
And we, we went up last, this, for this year, it was approved last year, uh, in August or so. And I was hopeful that not only could we maybe take it back to where it was prior, prior to last year, but that in fact, we might be able to lower it, partly because of the property valuations that have gone up, which automatically have increased the money that we receive. So I don't know, I haven't had a chance to review the material, so I don't know whether that six-million dollars is in there, and I don't know whether uh, you, Richardson is nodding. Is it in there, you? All right, that's, that's good news. Now, maybe there's a whole bunch of things to offset it, like what we're talking about, a salary program that, uh, could greatly increase, uh, the cost of labor in the general fund. But, um, I certainly hope if we can, that we at least are able to drop back the millage rate to where we were before, and if not, maybe even cut it, uh, below where we were before. Um, I'm concerned about doing a thorough job on, on, on salary, and I don't know how we do this, because the salary, we need to take time to think through it carefully. We've just had a introduction tonight, but we need to work on the budget during April. So I, we're gonna have to think carefully about how we work that, so that, uh, when we decide on the salary program, we then are going to have to decide, uh, what we have to do to adjust the, the budget that has been worked through, because we're not gonna get through with the salary program, I don't think, before May. And given that, that may determine the tax increase.
Yeah.
Or decrease. My preference would be for a tax decrease, as I said, and that's what I was thinking about. But when we have looked at the salary program just tonight, and we didn't see, we didn't have in our packets the detailed slides that were presented at, at the end, so I haven't had a chance to really look at those. But uh, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to not have to raise the millage rate certainly, and hopefully we can get it back to where it was, or even less than, and that's, that's one of my objectives, because times are tough, as Councilman Carn was saying, uh, for people out there. Everybody's cost of living has gone up. Uh, I know we sure don't eat as much steak as we used to eat. I can tell you, tell you that much. Uh, so I don't have a lot of precise guidelines, because I haven't had a chance to go through the material. We just got it, uh, prior to the weekend. So, um, that's all the comment I have at this point on the budget.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to the budget. Uh, it's a long process. Uh, we look at a lot of different items, we make adjustments, but we also can make adjustments as we go through the year. So, uh, we, we do make adjustments. Althea and, and her staff do a fantastic job, as all the departments, and they've been working on it for probably months, uh, to get to this point. So, uh, please, everybody, if you're interested, join us, uh, and, uh, as we talk about the budget, and we discuss it. Appreciate all the departments working tirelessly to do it. Althea and your, her group, fantastic job, always. So, thank you very much, and looking forward to it.
Councilman Gay?
No comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hawthorne, I want to give you an opportunity to, for those folks who may not have read the press release, or just seeing you for the first time, give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to all of our residents. We are so happy that you are here, and really looking forward to your leadership and your service to this community. So the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for the invitation to come to College Park. And that has been over several weeks, maybe, uh, going in two months now. And I have been of as excited and enthused as you can imagine. At the same time, I must apologize that, um, I've got a lot of catching up to do since that time, because these comments have been, been made, I believe by Councilman Carn. Budgeting process, I agree. I think it's the single most important document and process that a government and almost any organization goes through, but in terms of local government, there's no one simply that isn't impacted, uh, that has a relationship with College Park. Thursday evening, Thursday night, I should say, I was finishing up in the organization that I left from, the town of Bloomfield, Connecticut, in the final budget meeting that I was able to attend, had hoped to conclude it. We didn't quite get there, despite the late night. And literally, the next morning, I was on the road, uh, headed this way over, over two days, and I received the budget along with other documents of this morning, so I know the volumes that you've got. And I simply haven't put my arms around it yet, because I was busy with meetings and tours today. But budget is my discipline, just to start out in introducing myself. Um, there's not an organization that I've worked in. Uh, it's how I started, I believe in it, and if I can make some claim to being an expert, I would say that's the area. So I look forward to putting my arms around it, not as much as I'll have a chance to do in the future, starting from the beginning of the process, but it is, it, it is so important, and it certainly impacts our neighbors, both in terms of what it will cost, and them having to pay for it, and how well are we delivering on what they're paying for. So a lot to learn. Um, I'm here, you have my total focus. I look forward to working with each of you, the staff, many of whom I had a chance to visit with, uh, today, who they will probably be earning, um, a new title of distinction, because I believe what we do as public servants, it is our responsibility to build community, and to build better community, to build it leaner and meaner when we can, but to meet what our neighbors of Bloomfield, all fifteen-thousand-plus estimated population, what they expect and deserve, and we need to be in tune with them. So be patient with me as I learn a lot, um, but I will be a great student, putting in the necessary time, including cramming, and what it takes to, um, to lead this organization administratively. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I couldn't be more excited.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it and, and look forward to working with you. And we will go on to a report of Mayor and Council. Councilman Clay?
Well, good evening, everybody. Um, I just have four items I wanted to cover tonight, and none of them are great. Um, first was that periodically, we have complaints from my constituents, uh, with regard to some of the noise that is generated. It's actually music for the people that are enjoying it, but it's noise for the people who are hearing it at a distance, but not distant enough. Um, so on Sunday, I got a call from a constituent, and we have a constant issue that the, the noise ordinance, while it says certain things about time of day, uh, how much noise can be produced up until ten o'clock, and then after ten o'clock, how much noise can be produced. Uh, it also says in there that if the noise is a disturbance, uh, to the citizens, then it is inappropriate. And uh, we've made some attempts, uh, with Winston's organization. Danielle and I have looked at the noise ordinance off and on, and, and tried to tweak it in certain ways. Um, I, I don't know how we deal with it, but when the police go, and they, they were called, and I understand they, they did go, and the, uh, people on Main Street, uh, did cut down the noise, but then when the police left, the noise went back up. And, uh, this is periodic annoyance, and I, I love the people that are in the business that are doing it. It's, um, I know it's hard to control, but, um, somehow, we've got to do a better, better job of that, uh, whether it's in the ordinance or in enforcement or what. Uh, the next thing I wanted to mention was that I saw a report emailed about the sewer line at Zup Park being blocked again. And that, that was an issue that I pursued particularly because we are about to put restrooms in Barrett Park. And, and to be honest, this is my last year on council, and I have resisted putting Barrett, uh, restrooms in Barrett Park, even though the rest of the council was perfectly happy to accommodate that. And my concern was, uh, some of the vandalism and, uh, lack of cleanliness and not-so-good- And my concern was some of the vandalism and lack of cleanliness and not-so-good things that have happened in Zup and Phillips Park. And some of it I witnessed myself in visiting the park at various times, not recently. But we are, when we put the restrooms in at Barrett Park, I've made a commitment to the residents that at least while I'm on duty, and that's one of the reasons where I've gone along with putting the restrooms in, because I believe they will go in eventually. And I would like to be watching while they do go in to guide them so that we put in better security, better methods of controlling access to the restrooms, and monitoring cleanliness and so forth. So the comment I made was the other day when we actually approved going forward, get with getting bids on the restrooms, was that whatever we do in Barrett Park should be a pilot, and we should extend that to all the parks in the city. They should have equivalent standards. They should have no vandalism, they should have cleanliness, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm going to be making a big push, and when I heard this notice about sewer line being backed up, I pursued it, and I found out from Lance that it happens every year. And if it happens every year, then is it tree roots? I mean, that's a possibility, but it's also a possibility of people putting things down in the, the toilets that are not appropriate. And maybe there's a way around that. Maybe you don't put anything in the restroom that can clog up the toilet. Maybe you use hand dryers or what have you. I don't know. But that's a concern that I have. It's not my park, but I think all the parks should be reflective of the, the way we want to treat people in College Park. Next item, today, we had an issue with, with what I will call double parking on Main Street. And it, it got addressed. There was a flurry of emails that went back and forth. But we have, not just in the area that was a problem area today on Main Street, but we have a problem all along Main Street where people will come in and they will park their car, turn their flashers on, and vacate the car. So there's, there's no one in the car to move it if someone were to come and, or someone had to get out in an emergency. They just get, find out that their spouse had been in an auto accident. They want to pull out, and they've got a car parked behind them with the flashers on. This is ridiculous. It's got to be enforced. We've got to take a tougher stand if we have to do something in the ordinance. I think I said this in an email today, but I'm going to say it out loud. We have to do something in the sense of improving the ordinance, or improving the posting, or improving the important, uh, the enforcement, or all of the above. And my last item, we, I put on council agenda previously, meeting or two ago, the issue with the salaries that we have here, where it was declared that various members of council, because of things not being approved properly, et cetera, et cetera, owed money to the city, and that's being looked at through a third party now. We got an opinion from city attorney. We got an opinion from the Legislative Council to GMA, and we're getting an independent opinion. I'm not a lawyer. I always got C in my three law courses that I took at MIT, but I, so I'm, I look at things logically as opposed to precedent. But all I can say is I've read it over and over again, and I, I think it is all a moot point at this point, but it's in play. The citizens deserve to know what the situation is. Jackson Myers has been following up on it, Stanley, and we need, he needs to keep on top, I respectfully suggest that he should keep on top of it because he knows exactly what, what's going on. He's contacted an attorney. He's got somebody looking into it now. They're not moving it as fast as I would have liked. My hope was we'd have this resolved before you came on, and, and I put it on council to facilitate that previously. Unfortunately, it didn't move quite as fast as we would have liked. So you just need to know that it's an issue, and we need to let Jackson get it cleaned up as fast as he can get it cleaned up and get the results back. And then we got to make a decision as a group as to what we're going to do about it. But we're trying to be totally transparent on the system. And I mean, it started before I even got on council, so it's, it's an old, old issue. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Councilman Kern?
All right. Want to welcome Stanley, like everybody has. You know, hitting the ground running is a, is a big task. We don't want to give you too much to, we don't want to run you out of town at the same time. So I know it takes a while to ease into a lot of this stuff and get a, a fully realistic assessment of what, what we're working with in terms of what we've got currently and then our expectations up here. But we want to welcome you. Couple of things I had, let's see here. The commitment that we made in terms of city funds to a community bank, I don't know where we are on that, but I thought at some point that was going to be coming back to us. So in Winston, I guess you, you know, we're talking about there, but I'm assuming that's going to be coming up on a agenda pretty soon, I would imagine. I know there was a few other hoops to go through with that, but I don't want that to fall off the radar. And I, we, I talked, talked to you about it, Phillip, you're yaying on it at some point Couple of other things. We had a great event in Washington DC, the National League of Cities. Myself and the mayor were up and spent a few days up there. Great information, great contacts. I've gone to more, you know, NLC meetings than I can even recall in terms of conventions and whatnot. Really good info. Had a lot of meetings in and outside of, in the DC area there. Lot of good things going on there, a lot of good grant avail, uh, opportunities coming up, and it was a really good meeting. It was good to see so many folks. This was my first meeting since I had been back, and I, I saw so many council members and folks that were former this and former that and, and doing new things. So it was good visiting up there with folks, and you always get some great best practices from there. One of our congressional representatives has got some FAA authorization that's going to affect, you know, that affects the excluded communities, the communities that airports aren't in. Well, communities that aren't, do not own their local airports like us, and I'm looking forward to that moving forward in the, on the national front. So I'm hoping that's going to happen. On the state front, the one bill that I was really tracking, a House Bill 404, it did not get across the line in the Senate. It was tabled in the Senate, and I thought it had a good chance because it passed the Senate Committee unanimously and was going to go to the floor, and it was tabled. This was the bill in terms of decent standards for rental. But I think it's going to be up for, for next year because legislation now goes over a two-year cycle. So I want to keep, we want to keep an eye on that. Uh, let's see. I've got a Easter egg event set for April 4th. Chief, I wanted you to know about that. We're going to have it out at the, at the Camp Creek Park, so I could use a little help with that. Nothing hugely elaborate, but I want to talk to you about getting some support for that on Friday. Let's see. In terms of the budget, we talked, we touched on a few things. So Hugh, that, that additional, potential additional $6 million that we're talking about, is that a, is that, is that real, you know, un, un earmarked funds potentially there that we're talking here?
Well, the answer is yes. In my budget, I have a, you want me to give you some numbers?
Well, just a quick. I know we're going to go through it probably yes tomorrow.
I know. She has already put in the $2 million transfer general fund from my budget, and I still have a three and a half million dollar margin after that, plus this new contract with the data center generating another million and a half in franchise taxes too. So yes.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
And if we're talking about considering, you know, if we're looking at these potential salary increases, you know, making sure that this $6 million is real and not completely earmarked, I'm, I'm glad to see that. Okay, well, I definitely appreciate that. And I know you talked about at some point the potential of a second one poking around, speculating with us.
Yeah, and the current one is looking at growing some more too.
All right. Well, keep going with that, that's for sure. Chief, I want to thank you for the extra work and patrols and, and detail out in the Windsor Forest community there. They've been having some issues and some trouble there, but I think we're on the case with it, and we're off to a good start with it. You can see I'm wearing your cap. Without question, I support our police department, all of them, including our 911 operators. So we're glad to have things making, you know, making progress there. I've been seeing a few changes there, so people are starting to notice. So keep that up. That's, 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 uh, it's, it's, you're making some good progress there. I spoke briefly about, about William Moore possibly coming in and doing a little bit of consulting for us, and I didn't know how everyone felt about that, but I felt like if we had him come in and archive some serious data and institutional knowledge, I think that would really pay dividends for us in the future. I don't think it's something that would be a big cost amount, but I think the value of it years from now would really pay off for us. So I don't know if there's a consensus for that, but I'd like us to look at bringing him in and getting that institutional data on record archived in some kind of a way. So that's something I would like to do. And again, if there's a consensus on it, I'd love us to do it. I think it's something that we need to do, and I think it'd be what little money we spend on it, I think would be well spent. So I want to hear from everybody on that as well before we leave tonight. The other thing is, what else did I have here? Oh, Chief Wade, I know we were looking at the health initiatives. I didn't know if there was any update, but I know we had a good, that good call a couple of weeks ago, and just want to make sure we're moving forward with that. So at some point, I want to check in with you and see, see where we are. As you all know, Fulton County, we were able to secure some funding for some health initiatives and marketing out in the community. So at some point, we need to follow back up with them and see what they're going to, you know, the specifics of what they can do for us. And at some point, I guess you're going to bring it to us and present in terms of what they want to do there. So again, welcome, Stanley. You know, we, we are a complicated city, you know, heavily in terms of intergovernmental, even for the simplest questions. You know, if someone were to ask you, well, what size city is College Park? You know, you could say under 20,000. You could say over 50,000 because both answers would be correct. So managing this city is a, it's a complicated matter, you know. A lot of times, you know, someone may look at a managing perspective for a city of 14, 15,000 people. But at the same time, if you swell into 100,000 a day, it's a different proposition. You know, we budget in terms of our residents and needs and whatever have you, but we're hospitality-based city. That means we get a whole lot of company day in and day out. I often talk with our departments about the fact that that means that our city has to be kept a whole lot cleaner than other cities many times over, perhaps throughout the days. And a lot of our operations are weekend-based where we make a good chunk of our money. The only problem is, most of our staff is not here over the weekends, and it gives us a bad look sometimes when we get all this company. So there are a lot of things and dynamics that we want to look at in terms of tweaks and, and adjustments and stuff that we really want to kind of start to delve into, and we'll get to it. We've got plenty of time to get into it and whatnot, but I'm looking forward to just us making improvements and, and, and learning along the way. And generally, we work pretty good together up here, I think. As, you know, we talked about, there are some equity issues, as you saw today, but I don't think that's a major, major issue, but it's also something we need to all have a level playing field in terms of fairness and sameness for all. But that's the least of our issues. So looking forward to good things and, and some good work with you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, first of all, Stanley, welcome, city manager. Appreciate you being here. This is a very friendly city where people get out, people walk, people enjoy each other's companies, listen to music in the front lawn, so I, I think you'll enjoy it here, and we're looking forward to your expertise. You can take us to a different level, so we appreciate that. Jackson Myers, thank you so much for everything you've done. You're, you're the heart of this city and appreciate everything you've done, stepped up and, and put in a lot of long hours, so I appreciate it very, very much. Tim, there's a plate on East Main on the other side that's been there for about two or three years, and I don't know if it's waiting on hearts or, or what. If you could just kind of look into it and, and tell us what's going on, I don't know. Just send us an email and let us know what's going on because I've gotten a couple of calls. So just appreciate you, you looking into that. Police Chief, again, thank you very much for coming to the town hall. Wasn't it, turned out we expected to be there, but the people there learned an awful lot. They learned who you are and appreciate, appreciate you being there. I got a couple of calls about the post office, and I don't know how we deal with the post office, but it wasn't open. I went up there again today at 10 o'clock, supposed to be open at 9:00. The door was open. I guess the counter was not open. All the things are down. So we need to, to look in that, and I don't know if they're holding that strictly for training, but you can't get stamped there anymore. So we need to, to have a sit-down with the post office. Maybe we can have them come in and explain it to us, what's going on. So I don't know if anybody else knows anymore, or we, or even if we can't do anything with the post office, so.
You know, I was thinking about that, hmm, maybe about a month, I'm sorry, a week or so ago, and perhaps it might be useful to at least, I, I don't know about getting someone physically here. I mean, we can try, but at least getting all of our concerns about what's going on together in a letter and sending it.
Well, you know, this, this is a federal issue.
Yes.
And we've got two senators here. And they come here ever so often. Maybe we should talk to one of our senators. Not their, not them directly, but they have local staff. Why not talk to their local staff representative and tell them what's going on here?
So why don't we do this? Why don't we compile all of the concerns that we've heard and, and we get a letter drafted and, and at least send that on to the staff of our, our representatives?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So if, gentlemen, if you want to send them to me by the end of the week, then we can circulate a letter, see if you approve on that, and then we can, we can go from there. Sound good?
Perfect.
All right.
Keep our new city manager involved.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
On April the 30th, and I'm, you're going to hear it from me next council meeting as well, Spin the District is coming, and they'll be at the Public Safety Building where they ride bicycles in a criterium. And we had people from 22 different states come to College Park. We had people from 12 or 13 different countries come to ride in this bike race. They have food trucks, they have, they do have alcohol where you can buy there, now hopefully not the bicyclists, but, but it's, it's fun for the kids can get out, they have a kids' event. So please come out and support this. There's, we need... There's, we need to have more support of that, and it's, it's a great event for everybody to get together in the city and, and have a good time. Last thing I have is, Fire Chief, the other day I was driving, wasn't my ward, it was your ward, up Mercer, and there was a fire truck there. Stopped to see if everything was okay. There was a lady that had some issue, I didn't get into the, that issue, that part with them, but she had an issue. The fire truck had come from Godby Road. And I said, "Is everything okay?" And they said, "We're waiting on an ambulance from downtown." They'd been waiting forty minutes. So that fire truck on Godby Road for the apartments, I don't know how many other fire trucks you have out there, but that's getting into their business and, and curtailing their ability to respond to the other people that live up there. So, I mean, hats off to those people, they did a fantastic job. They were very up, and it's an issue that I think we need to, again, dress with, with the higher-ups, because we've lost one hospital, another one's closed downtown. And if we have to wait on Grady to come out, in the traffic, it takes them forever. So, at least an hour. So, I don't know how long they waited. I left after about forty minutes, but, uh, any thoughts from...
Well, it's, it's been an ongoing issue over the last few years. I was, over the last two months, they have improved. If you notice, we've been having a Grady ambulance that's parked in the background station or either in the public safety parking lot. So I take it we're still having a few issues that, that we have to iron out. But we've been talking to their supervisors and, and upper management, and hopefully, hopefully soon we'll, we'll have it ironed out.
Okay, hopefully we can, we can get that, because if somebody needed the fire truck, or, I, I don't know if both EMTs were on other calls, you know, it's, uh...
Well, we have, um, six units per day that's out. And normally, very seldom they're all out at the same time. But if that unit was out, we had a couple of the units that would cover for them in their areas.
Well, we appreciate their service, they did a great job. I just wanted to let you know, but that's a concern we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to deal with from up here, so thank you very much, and that's, that's all I have.
Just to add a, a little bit to that point, there has been a study committee that is being formed in regard to this very issue, 'cause it's not only an issue that is in the South Fulton region, but areas across the state. And so there was some legislation introduced to allow municipalities to be able to transport, but it did not, did not cross the finish line, but they are, the legislature is taking a look at the issue in between this session and the next, so...
Well, if we're able to transport, there might be a need for, for other transportation, you know, vehicles in your budget. This is, so, again, we're out. Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Councilman Gay?
Okay, I have a couple items to discuss, but I'll be very brief. And they're in no particular order. Oh, is there an update on the bid paving?
No, it's still out.
Has it closed yet?
It's not closed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Soon as it closes, I'll let the whole body know.
Is there a pre-bid conference, a mandatory pre-bid?
I, I can't truly answer that question at this time.
Okay. I'm amazed at the great work that the In Her Hands organization did. However, I know there's some information they can't or don't disclose as part of their mission, but I would like to know a little bit more. I referred numerous of people, I don't know if any of them were considered. I have no, there's, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if we need to copy their nine ninety, which is a public document. But I would like to get a little bit more information if our citizens are being impacted, good or bad. The next thing is lawn care. The late Jack Longino talked about it, and I'm gonna bring it back up. We need to, we need to try and figure out if we can, City Manager, we might need to look at if there are other cities that have lawn care ordinances. In my, in my ward, there's no time limits for when they can come. So they can be out there seven days a week till it get dark. You either got a, a blower behind you, a blow on the next street, and then on top of that, you got the roofers, and then you have the tree cutters with the planes. It's a very noisy community. And on Sundays, they're out there blowing. And the other thing is, and I don't know the facts on this, but I don't even think the, I heard that blowers, the big backpack blowers, emit more carbon monoxide than, than an old car. So, I know it may sound like, you know, I'm just saying it, but I, I really would like for us to see if we can control, not to mention, I don't even know if they have any type of license requirement. I mean, that's, they're everywhere. Ms. Smith pays a hundred dollars, Ms. Rube pay one seventy-five, Bertha pay ninety. They don't show up, they don't come on time. I just think that we need to, we need to be able to at least control some of that narrative on lawn care companies. And more importantly, they put, they put the debris on the street, and we pick it up. I don't even know what that costs, but, I mean, they don't even, they just dump it on the street, and they got some that blow it to the other side of the street. It's just a, it's just no control, no order. And I know you're not gonna be in some communities on Sunday morning with no blower. You ain't gonna be in Lower Roswell with no blower on Sunday, if you can get in their communities. The next thing I wanna talk about is, someone mentioned they wanna save the city money. I just wanna tell you for the record that for about three years, I did what's called cost containment. I went to city governments, and I approached their chief financial officers, and we talked about how to save organizations' money. And what that looked like was that we interviewed department directors, and we looked at their budgets. But to sum it all up, what we learned is that most cities, county governments could save approximately twenty to thirty percent. This city has never, ever done a study on how to save money. It's done studies on how to spend money, but it's never done studies on how to save money. So I concur that I wanna save the city money as well. So maybe we should start looking at, um, consulting companies that show cities how to save money. You'd be surprised at the best practices that come out of that report. But I was told by a director at City of Atlanta, he says, he was a director, says, "We're not trying to save money." The only person that seemingly cared about saving money was the chief financial officer or the taxpayers. The directors didn't wanna save money. They enjoyed a great life of, which takes me to my next point. And I'm not trying to be condescending, but cronyism in this city needs to stop. People are being hired and given an undue advantage because of who they know and not because of what they know. And, and, and the reason why I'm saying that to you is, it makes a difference when you bring in people in your, and I'm not, I don't have a problem with thanking you for what you do, but it makes a difference when you bring people in your organization to help, that has the acumen, the skill set, and/or the education. It makes a difference. You'd be surprised at the liabilities that we have to discuss in executive session. You'd be surprised at the torts. And that, and I was telling someone the other day, that money could be going back into this community. Then it just, so, and then another thing is, account, I, I, I come in the city hall, but I don't, you don't see me that I'm here. I don't even see people in the office. I, I was, I was telling my kids, I says, "Maybe you shouldn't go to college. Maybe you should just work at College Park." I mean, there are people who are not even in their office. I don't know what that, I don't know what that means, but, but, uh, we pay good money to our directors. We pay a great salary to our directors, some of the highest-paid directors per capita in the state. And, and, and just to have a liaison affair is not how this organization should work. The other thing is, I'm on the pension board, and I'm gonna be discussing on maybe an age and service equal age sixty-five or seventy. Meaning, I agree that people should be paid more, I get it. But people ought to also be able to leave when they provided a service to this community. A lot of organizations consider age and service, you, you can't be sixty-five trying to work here for twenty, thirty years. And it's time to look at that, and it's also time to look at our pension. Pension is a dinosaur. It's time to, to sit down and have a hard conversation about pensions and, and retirement age. I think that's all I have. Mayor, let me just check my notes. Camp Truitt, there was a public comment on Camp Truitt. I spent about fourteen years of my professional life on Camp Truitt, from Michael Hightower to the late Emma Darnell, to Bill Edwards, yada, 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 yada. It's gonna take the leadership up here to change Camp Truitt. It's the only way Camp Truitt, I'm talking to the caller. It's the only way Camp Truitt ever's gonna change. You need three votes and to partner with Fulton County. But what did come out of Camp Truitt is that now the, the county invested a lot of money in learning how to do business with Camp Truitt. They know now about the covenants that the Truitt family placed on the, the deed. So, the leadership of Fulton County know how to work with a public-private relationship with Camp Truitt. It is a jewel. It's a, it's a beautiful piece of land. But, you know, we, we're spending seven hundreds of thousands on Williamburg Quarter, and Camp Truitt is right here in our backyard. It's, it's a priority, it's just, what do people care about? People have a right to care about what they wanna care about, and it ain't Camp Truitt. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I wanna make sure that we clarify that the Willingham LCI support is actually not a financial investment on behalf of the city. And so I wanna make sure that we are clear on that for those who may be watching or hadn't had the opportunity to take a look at the information in our packet. But I do wanna, again, for the umpteenth time, welcome you, Mr. Hawthorne. Looking forward to working with you, and thank you, Mr. Myers, for your leadership over these last several months. And we are grateful to you and everything that you do for the city. I wanna thank the folks at Coca-Cola United for tour. Had a great opportunity to learn and see more there, had a great group. Chief Rogers was there, Councilman Karn was there, Director Johnson, and I'm forgetting, Mr. Myers was there for some time as well. And yes, Mr. Lewis, yes, we all had the hairnets on. We looked great. But it is such an impressive facility, always so excited to go over and see all the new things that they're doing. I think that's my third time over there. And, and another trip we made last week, we, we stepped across the border a little bit, I believe. Went to the Boys and Girls Club and got a great tour over there as well. And so I wanna thank everyone for their efforts in showing us around, because so many of our kids in College Park are serviced by that Boys and Girls Club, and they are doing amazing things with our youth there. And we're looking forward to continuing our, our partnerships there and strengthening them. As Councilman Karn said, we were at the National League of Cities Conference, and our fearless city clerk, Ms. Ames, was there with one of our youth council representatives too. So it was a great opportunity for him to see how government works and learn more about the ways in which youth can participate, and just getting to be in that environment was fantastic. Not only for him, but for me too, it was, it was great. We, we really had a fantastic time. And wanted to highlight that I have been selected by NLC with nine other elected officials across the country to participate in the Housing Supply Accelerator that they are doing with the American Planings Association. Because access to housing and affordable housing is an issue that communities across the United States are facing. So we will be working for the next six to eight months on gathering, seeing some of the places around the country that are doing things very well. This steering committee is headed up by representatives from the American Planings Association, Mayor Cory Woods from Tempe, Arizona. He has done some very innovative things out there, and looking forward to working with everyone. I believe that I'm representing the smallest city out of the ten, but we certainly have a lot to say and a lot to, to contribute to the conversation. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to participate. So, I, as we go into the budget season, I think it's really important to take a bit of a step back, because I think we always have to keep in mind that in order to get through COVID, we did some restructuring of our debt, and we've been paying on interest only on that debt. So as we are talking about how we are prioritizing spending, we need to always keep in mind that we've got some fairly big payments coming along, and that should always be in, in our calculations. So I know that we will have plenty of time to talk about it, but I did wanna bring that up because we've, we've got a lot of priorities, and we've got a lot of things to do. As I said earlier, I think getting our employees where they need to be should be paramount, because we have not necessarily served them as well as we could at points in our history. And as I said, it's time, time to put our money where our mouth is when it is, when we're talking about our employees and making sure that they are paid competitive wages, because we are absolutely fortunate that people choose to work for this city. And we should recognize that, celebrate it, and appreciate it on a daily basis. If you are going to prom this year, and you need a little assistance with a prom dress, Ms. Skippy can help you over at the Old National Outlet Mall. She is giving away free prom dresses, sizes zero to twenty-eight. So if you are interested, need more information, you can call her at nine-three-seven-eight-two-nine-seven-five-nine-seven. Again, that's nine-three-seven-eight-two-nine-seven-five-nine-seven. She will be over there from Thursday through Sunday, twelve to five. And I know she's been sending me some pictures of some lovely ladies who are ready and all decked out and very excited. They're doing alterations as well, and doing accessories, the whole nine yards. So if you or anyone you know is in need of a prom dress, it is that season. Ms. Skippy can help you out. And I believe that is all that I have. We have one motion coming out of executive session to allow the city manager to make adjustments for nine-one-one and jailer salaries. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Karn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. And is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Allen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous as well. We are adjourned at ten oh nine...